To try and put public comment early and they there'll be public comment at the end. So that we get the full benefit of the public's concerns. I've been tried to include items that all the commissioners requested. So that I think everything on our backlog is there, which means we can't get to it all. So we'll have to maybe pick and choose. I've also attached a summary of where I think we are with respect to the comprehensive plan. There are seven questions we need to reach consensus on regarding chapter five. Whether we do that at the beginning or the end is I'll leave that to Chris. There's a heck of a lot to do. I'll ask the speakers get to the point. Particularly what they're trying to achieve or what their concern is. In the future, the zoning administrator is going to prepare the agenda. And I will work with him to try and get it published at least a minimum of a week ahead of time. But we'll see what happens when we're there. So do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Mr. Chairman, I have an amendment to the agenda. Please may I offer that amendment?
Yes, we're going to I think I need to get a motion to approve them a second. And then we'll have discussion and you can make your amendment at that time.
My motion to approve.
Thank you. We have a second?
Second.
All right, discussion Commissioner Green Gold, if you'd like to go ahead.
Thank you, Chairman Brown. In light of last week's town council approval of a nine month building moratorium. It's imperative that we all focus on discussions and meetings on completing the comprehensive plan. And we should try and finish a draft, I would think by about August. So that the town council will have have to have the fall to review it in. And then have public input and finalize the completion within the nine month period. So therefore I would move to amend the agenda to remove item four. Which is the discussion of the short term rentals for tonight's meeting.
Okay, do we have a second on that amendment? Actually, it's item six, isn't it?
Uh, yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, item six. It is item six. I'm sorry. It is item six. And the reason I would like to remove it is just so we have more time to discuss the the comprehensive plan tonight, which is going to be a long discussion.
Do we have a second for that amendment? No seconds. Any, is there any other discussion? Let me say that the we we will need to move through. Item six, several of the items quickly, but we can get to the meat of this meeting tonight. So I'd ask people to think about that as we as we move ahead. As to the timeframe that it's going to take to accomplish this, that is item number five. And we'll, the zoning administrator and I will both have several things to say about that. And inform you a little better on where we think this is at, what needs to be done. So with with that, do I have a vote on approving the agenda? All in favor?
Chairman Brown?
Yes.
This is Commissioner Barold. I just wanted to ask if if the if the amendment is passed to to if we discussed short term rentals tonight and we found that it was too lengthy. Is it possible at that time to table it? So we could work on the comprehensive plan if it became too labor intensive? Is that a possibility?
Well, the commission can do as it pleases. Well, if you want to put a motion on the floor to table that that item. The commission approves, we'll move forward. Are you are you tabling that motion now?
No, no, I was thinking that we would keep the agenda as it is and then and discuss the
Okay.
short term rental, but if it became too labor intensive and we weren't getting enough progress. Then I would recommend the amendment to table it.
Okay, well, we have the motion on the floor to approve the agenda. Commissioner Green Gold, approve, disapprove?
Um, I disapprove.
Okay, Commissioner Blackwelder?
I'd like to make an amendment to item. It was six regarding short term rentals. A motion that we limit the discussion to receiving Chris's overview. maybe a three minute comment period for each of us or two minute comment period. Limit it to maybe 10 minutes total.
All right, there's a motion to limit discussion of item number six to 10 minutes. We have a second.
I'll second that motion.
All right, all in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We have one Commissioner Larson, are you opposed in favor?
No, I'm in favor.
Okay, so we have one opposed, the commission, the motion passes. We will limit discussion on number six to 10 minutes. Now, we have a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I move approval.
Well, we have, we have the, yeah, okay, you move approval, second?
Second, I'll second.
Right, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Is anyone opposed? Okay, next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes for February 24th. Has everyone them? Or is there anyone that has not received the minutes? The draft minutes, hearing none, can I get a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, so I believe Commissioner Blackwelder seconded and Commissioner Barold made the motion. All right, is there all in favor of approving the minutes? Please say aye.
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 As amended, correct, as amended Chairman Brown?
We haven't amended.
Okay, I'm sorry, the minutes. Yes, I approve. Thank you.
So anyone opposed to approving the minutes? All right, the minutes have been approved unanimously. All right, public comment on the agenda or on, yeah, public comment on tonight's items. Let me point out that if you'd like to speak. Would you please use at the bottom of your screen, there's the raise your hand feature. Click on that and it will show up and we will get to everybody that raises their hand. I'm asking that you make your comments succinct and limit them to two minutes. If you have a more complicated or more extensive comments to make. Please know that there is email on the town website, you can email us. Or if you want to mail a letter and we will make sure all the commissioners get that. So with that, let's see. Does anyone have their hand up? Oh, yes, I see a couple. Mr. Carpenter.
Mr. Chairman and members, thank you. I have a couple of questions regarding chapter five, the land use of the rewrite of the comprehensive plan. The first one is under the land objective, plan calls for enhancing the residential qualities of the town's original cottage neighborhoods. Through a program of improving infrastructure, including sidewalks, curbs, crosswalks and streets. How do you envision this being accomplished? In many parts of the town where cars are parked on opposite sides of the road, the street's impassable. If curbs and sidewalk areas are, excuse me, curbs and sidewalks are installed. The problem would be compounded. And what about emergency vehicles? My next question, have any members of the commission discussed town center proposal? With the mayor, members of the council, and if so, what were their reactions? Next question, where will the parking be for the towns for the town pier? Next, who's going to pay for the town pier? And who's going to pay for the town center development? Next question, won't the same high water issues and coastal flooding? That could impact Stinett's place and the Harbor Vista projects also impact the planned town center? If Harbor Vista should not be built because of the rising sea levels. Why would the town consider an extensive town center project in the same area? And finally, under the community character section. The plan recommends that a study be commissioned evaluating the character of the buildings, signs and structures in in town. And to select those buildings and building elements that are that set the standard for a traditional architecture and design character. That's unique to Chesapeake Beach. What does this mean? Are you suggesting all buildings in Chesapeake Beach look alike or painted in a set palette of colors? How will you develop the expertise in staff to make those kinds of determinations as to aesthetics? How will it not just be imposing someone's subjective standards of aesthetics on everyone in town? If you pose a set of standards, won't that lead to a community over time looks old and outdated? As it won't keep up with modern styles? If you try to
We have a time limit. I'm sorry, Mr. Carpenter.
Thank you.
You want to finish that question, then we'll move on.
If you try to update those standards, doesn't that mean you'll just have a debate in town? About what's standard they prefer and the decision maker and just gets to impose their preference? Thank you.
Thank you for those questions. Mr. Donovan?
Can you, can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, yes, we can hear you fine.
I want to thank you Chairman Brown and other appointed officials of the planning and zoning commission. Chris Jakubiac, it's nice to see you as well, sir. So I will be very brief and I'm going to paraphrase some of my questions and comments. First, the the proposed or the draft of the comprehensive plan that is on tonight's agenda. It seems to me that it has a lot more regulations. And a lot of those regulations are very intense. So I just have a overall kind of large, big picture question about, you know, does planning and zoning consider these regulations? Required to be part of the comprehensive plan? To preserve the current small town bay front character that we enjoy today in Chesapeake Beach? My next comment and question refers to the proposed ban on multifamily dwellings. To me, it's a, it's a, it could be considered a form of exclusionary zoning. And I wanted to know if planning and zoning, Mr. Jakubiac have discussed this. I also understand that there's going to be a proposed multifamily, a ban on multifamily dwellings. In neighborhoods that already have existing multifamily dwellings. And I would like justification on why there's going to be a ban on that. I I've taken some time in the last few weeks to do some research online. And I would like to ask if anyone on the commission has heard about or looked into a program called Reinvest Maryland. It seems like it was written for Chesapeake Beach. It talks about infill revitalization and redevelopment. And to me, it it just would be very worth everyone's time to look into that. I have two more points.
I'm sorry, Mr. Donovan, we are at time limit.
It's okay. Can I get the last one in?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. The 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 time limit to for tonight to discuss the short term rentals is very disheartening to me. It just kicks the can down the road again when the can keeps getting kicked between planning and zoning and town council. So I would just ask that, you know, you guys put this that issue to bed tonight so we can move on and chew gum and walk at the same time. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Blitz. Is your mute on?
I apologize, it was. Thank you Chairman Brown, members of the commission. A few questions for your consideration tonight. With respect to the new proposed town center, how's it going to be developed? Have you have you or the town already chosen a developer? If so, who is it and has an agreement been reached? And what are the proposed private and public spaces within that plan? Because right now it appears to be a mix, but that mix isn't clearly defined. And so I've been trying to get clarity on that. Have you or the town reached agreements with the property owners whose properties will be redeveloped under that plan? To develop it in the fashion that you're proposing? Or are there going to be mandates and eminent domain to achieve that plan? The new town center places replaces a lot of the parking that already serves existing uses. And I wonder whether you've got an evaluation of the total parking count you would need for this proposal. And if so, what is that parking count and where would it be located? And have you done the analysis of the impacts on infrastructure for that new town center plan? And I guess the, what are the exact methods that you're proposing to protect those developments from sea level rise and flooding? You know, where will the bulkheads actually be? Have you evaluated the feasibility of the MBE permitting to achieve those protective devices? And so I'll follow up with my other questions at the end of the meeting because I know my time is limited. Those were my questions.
Thank you for those questions. Let's see, I don't have a name here, but I believe it's Ms. Lanham.
Yes, can you hear me okay?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Chairman and appointed officials have a few questions to present this evening. First, what is the purpose or the purposes of the height limitation? Second, if one of those purposes is to protect the view of property owners. How far of a distance in the sightline are you seeking to protect? What views are you trying to protect? The bay? If it is the bay, why do some people in town get a preference on how they use their property at the expense of people who live east of them? Doesn't that mean that those people who own properties that are closest to the water? And who have paid a premium for that property are now having their property subject to the preferences of others? If the purpose of the height limitation is merely to prevent people from seeing a building, why does it matter how tall it is? They can still see the building regardless of its height. If a uniformed skyline is being sought, won't that have already been defeated by existing buildings that exceed the 35 foot limitation? The proposed new school is to be 58 feet high. Why would a school be one of the tallest buildings in a town? Have you evaluated the impact of the height limitation on the projected population growth in town? And if so, what are those impacts and over what time period is the projection? And lastly, have you evaluated the environmental impacts of the height limitation? Shorter buildings means there is an incentive to make structures where a larger footprint, which creates more impervious surfaces. Have you determined those impacts that you are planning?
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Gignilio.
Yes, I'm here. I was muted. I'm sorry. Yeah, I have some questions. And there are as follows, the tax base per person is higher for higher density buildings. And that will be limited by your proposed height and multifamily limitations. Have you determined the impact of your proposals on the tax base? If so, what are those impacts and what timeframe did you use to evaluate those impacts? Question two, similarly, have you evaluated the impact of reducing the maximum height of buildings on the feasibility of building residential, commercial and institutional uses? And if so, what are those economic impacts? If you have, what dollars per square foot are you using and evaluating viability? For the various building types to determine the impacts? Question three, have you evaluated the impact of the height limitations on real estate valuations in Chesapeake Beach? And the consequent impacts to the taxable gross receipts of the town? If so, what are those impacts? Question four, have you evaluated the economic consequences of your proposals on the town's growth rates? And if so, what are those impacts? Question five, have you evaluated the economic consequences of your proposals on the tourism and visitor rates in the town? And if so, what are those impacts? Are you relying on specific studies? And if so, what studies are you using? Question six, multifamily developments usually provide higher quality infrastructure than single family homes. Have you evaluated how new limits on height and multifamily dwellings will impact infrastructure? If so, what are those impacts on roads, sidewalks, water and sewer connections? And water supply and service? Number seven, have you evaluated the impact of your proposed limitations on multifamily dwellings on people with diverse home needs? People of limited means, people 55 or over, single professionals? If so, what are those impacts? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gignilio. And Ms. Johnson?
Hello, everyone. Josh Johnson here. Appreciate all your commissioners' time. Appreciate last week too bearing with me. I'm new to this. So five relevant data points on vacation rentals. There was two to five complaints versus 600 vacation rentals and individuals that signed a petition for it. Next door survey put on by a city official and trying to be able to help create some transparency. The taxpayer survey that was out. The initial meeting survey done when the first planning and zoning meeting was put together. All of those data points shows a majority of individuals that were for it. And most of those are resounding majority. In that our elected officials are elected by majority. It is how we are constructed here in the town. And and it's important that we see that when we're basing decisions made by the town for the town. There is also the last one, based on the averages in public safety. Last year, there was about approximately 1,500 calls. It was confirmed in one of the board meetings that there was two calls on vacation rentals. That would mean 0.001% of individuals would have been impacted by vacation rentals. Showing that the challenges that the city faces is by far and away different. And and really, in essence, even lifting COVID and and having vacation rentals. Those two would coincide and the numbers should maintain very close approximation. It's been said that or suggested more research is due. I've talked to my litigation attorney. He definitely feels all the opposite. Five different data points showing what the majority of individuals would want leads to only one point. We're doing feasibility studies for sidewalks that was never done for vacation rentals. And to try to do that retroactively after we already have five data points is proving insignificant to what's going on with the six months that individuals here have waited patiently. To be able to to be lifted up by a voice of everyone that's here. By the majority of individuals that are in favor of this.
Mr. Johnson, may I have time, please?
Appreciate that. And wrapping up, I want to appreciate, you know, all of you and what you're about. I know it's not an easy decision, but I do would would recommend that we push this on to to the board and have a final decision on. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. I believe, is that everyone? I see one more hand up. But I only see from the eyes up. I can't tell who it is. Mr. Mr. Montague?
Yes, this is Chad Montague. And I wanted to touch base on the vacation rentals as well. I think that we do, as Josh mentioned. And that we do need to make a decision. We do need to push this forward. I would like to talk about Mr. Jakubiac's memo that went out. And a lot of the things are very unclear where there's a disconnect between Airbnb and VRBO. Saying that they are, you know, just what's what's being rented. And what's not being, what's not being explained is there are actually platforms for individual owners. Over 95% of them are singularly owned properties. There are people that are just like you and I and they're not this big company. Also, vacation rentals, you mentioned that they're absent from the zoning ordinance. And they and they are exactly because they were not an issue. They they've always existed in Chesapeake Beach. And by saying that they weren't, they were not there because it because they weren't wanted is not necessarily the correct answer. Again, also, he mentioned bed and breakfast. We've heard this continuously as being compared to vacation rentals. And they're completely different. Vacation rentals are a totally different entity than 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 a bed and breakfast. Mr. Jakubiac also stated that vacation rentals will cause the loss of housing to the vacation rent, to the to the regular rental market. And is this, is the goal to control the purchases in the town? And if Mr. Jakubiac says outright that vacation rentals would lower the residential character. I would, I would ask how that would happen. There's still rent, vacation, there's still houses, single family houses. Along with that, some of the significant concerns that he brought up were with street widths, housing density, lot sizes and parking shortages. Vacation rentals don't change that at all. It doesn't change the street width. It doesn't change the housing density. It doesn't change the lot size of the houses they're on. And most importantly, potential changes to existing existing zoning to clear to clarify things. When he says, well, while no changes are needed is is kind of misleading. The residents of Chesapeake Beach have spoken in several surveys and a petition with a total of several thousand people being involved in this. And it's been, it's been 70% plus in in all of these. And I don't wish for anyone to make a decision. So I would, I would like to see if we can push this forward to the board.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Montague. I see Gary's iPad.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Commissioner and the rest of everybody on the commission. My name's Gary Luckett, owner of Trader Seafood Steak and Ale. In reference to the future comprehensive plan, I see the idea and or the scope or vision of the future, the comprehensive plan. See for the town center seems to involve my property. And I was wondering, is anybody ever going to reach out to me? And let me know that a future town center development of buildings and roadways was to perhaps acquire half of my property? It is a major concern and it seems to be that I'm limited to do anything with my property with the new moratorium. I'm going to be unable to do anything in the future as well. As I sit on a building built in 1958. Right now, I'm currently limited to go out and or up. So it is a major concern. I also see in the vision, I'm wondering if anybody's even reached out to the local athletic organization to let them know that it'll be a reduction in size to the park out back, which will also reduce the size and ability of the sports and everything that we have now in the community. It was short and brief and thank you very much for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, sir. Um, I, okay, I don't see any more hands up. I have to say, I forgot to ask everyone to give their full name and address for our record. I don't know how we could do that if you hang around for the second public comment, if we can make sure people do that on the second round. Okay, the next, there are no more public speakers that I can see. So we will move on to basically the schedule and priorities during the moratorium. I just want to say a couple of words to the commissioners and town staff before I start. I've heard from a few that I can be somewhat abrasive and pushy. I have sort of an excuse. I'm an old Navy captain. I'm mission driven and I'm goal focused. So if I've offended anybody, I apologize now. We have a lot to do. For the public, you should know that we are constrained by law, the town code, the Maryland Open Meetings Act. State and town ethics rules on what we can reach out, how we can reach out, when we can reach out, those sorts of things. So we're doing the best we can because we're volunteers. Trying to operate within the framework and stay within the guardrails that that we've been given to accomplish this mission. The moratorium that was passed by the town council expires before Christmas, shortly before Christmas. Most of the commission's work, if the objective is to get it done before, to get the new plan in place by the end of the moratorium, most of the commission's work is in the next few weeks and certainly the next month or so. In my opinion, we should defer a lot of the other tasks that we come upon until we can focus on this one and get it over with. But that's a decision for the commission to make. Additional meetings are possible, but they will require town support. And we can't commit to additional meetings tonight. But if, I'll ask the commissioners later about their availability. For your information, Chris, I should say the town, the zoning administrator is going to put together a table of contents of the remaining chapters that lists many of the issues. It's beyond just an outline, but it should have sufficient detail. So you have some idea what the issues are that are being placed in front of the commission before the meeting date. And hopefully that will help the public and help the commissioners as they prepare for these meetings. Also, we have a Dropbox that has a few documents in it. It's not very user friendly. The, we're going to work on that, make it a little more user friendly. So commissioners can get, have access to the documents that they need to do their work. Going forward, it's going to be helpful if commissioners that want something added or deleted from the plan, that we have an affirmative decision to that effect. Because Jeff has to write it. Jeff has to take those ideas and add them or delete them from the plan. And he needs to know not just that a commissioner likes some idea, but that the commission as a group has reached consensus on that idea. So if you'll be succinct and direct in what you're proposing, that will help a lot. So let me go around the commission and ask what your feelings are on additional meetings in the near term for, to work on the comprehensive plan. Commissioner Larson, if I could ask you first.
Well, it seems it would have to be necessary because there's just too much work to be done. And once a week, even until Christmas, it ain't going to get done.
Okay, so, so we, I would have to give you, propose a date and to see if you're available. Is that right?
Yeah.
Okay, Commissioner Evans.
Yeah, I also think we kind of owe it to the public and the town to devote as much time as we can to this comprehensive plan. I mean, I have two young kids, I have a family, I have a busy life, but I made this commitment. And I got a, it's a, it's a big, it's a huge decision, a lot of decisions that we have to make in a short period of time. So I think we do need to devote some more time if possible.
Okay, Ms. Morall, Commissioner Morall.
Thank you, Chairman. I think we've got a robust comprehensive plan. And I think it's going to require a lot of time and focus. So I think that the additional meetings will probably be warranted and justified. And I am in support of that, albeit on a holiday. But I would absolutely be willing to accomplish a review of the plan by having the additional meetings as needed.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Greengold.
I agree.
Okay, Commissioner Blackwelder.
I also agree.
Okay, you said you'd support additional. Thank you. All right. Can I ask, are there any other commissioners that do not have access to the current twenty-ten plan? Ready access to it? A hearing none. If commissioners have any problems reaching documents that they feel they need, if they'll let me know, I will work with the town council, town administration to make them available to you. So we aren't slowing you down because I know you're very busy. Also, at the last town council meeting, the master walkability plan was approved. The commission had spoken before that they thought it would be a good thing to add this as an appendix to this comprehensive plan. I will send out a link to the master walkability plan if you haven't gotten it already and ask you to take a look at it so we can at a future meeting decide whether we want to include it as an appendix. This time, I'd like to turn it over to Chris and ask for his ideas on schedule and recommendations on priorities. Chris.
Hey, hello, everybody. So I think we need to move relatively quickly. But we need to bring the community along with us. And we have a challenge to get this done. There's no doubt about it. I took Larry's breath away when I proposed a schedule for this. And I'm still thinking to myself, wow, we've got our work cut out for us. I think it's possible and it's feasible. We've had a lot of work sessions over the past eighteen months or so, even more. And a lot of the foundation for most of the topics that would be included have already been addressed. And on some level, I have to move forward with those documents and those findings and sort of analysis of existing conditions and trust that you still see things essentially the same way. And I'm not talking about the recommendations, but just the background content. Tonight is March twenty-fourth. Cindy was right in saying that August would be the date. But August is kind of, is really the date, not just for us to have a plan, but to have a public hearing on the plan. If we have a public hearing in August, I think that gives the town council the time it may need from September through December to act. And I've sort of built in in my conceptual schedule and perhaps more time for the council than they may need. But I'd rather err on that and have them have time to do their work and coordinate with you if it's necessary. So that basically means that at our next two meetings, the main topic of those meetings would be to review a draft plan. Essentially, the first half of the draft plan in April, and then the second half in May. And then at the end of May, and I'm suggesting maybe we have a work session in May, and it sounds like you're all basically in agreement for that. And at the end of May, we could even begin talking about the, or actually reviewing any potential zoning text amendments that would be necessary to bring about the plan as you'd like to see it. So basically, the text amendments would run concurrently with the plan. And if there's any map amendments, they would run concurrently with the proposed plan too. And you would submit both the plan and the zoning amendments at the same time. And that doesn't suggest that the zoning amendments have to, everything that's recommended or suggested or envisioned has to be addressed through regulation change now. It may be that the most important things related to land use are, or there's items that you've discussed previously would advance with the plan. But, you know, and tonight's meeting is going to be pretty informative, helping shape how that goes. The end result of this condensed schedule is that I'm hoping to position you to have a draft plan that we can formally release on June first, or first week of June, sorry. So that's essentially where my target is. We have some room to slip in there if it's necessary, but I'd like to do that, aim for that June first, first week of June timeframe. So I'm happy that you're willing and able to meet. And I think we will, at the staff level, be proposing a number of dates and coordinating with Larry to see what dates we can fit in for work sessions.
So if I could just review that quickly, what I believe Chris is saying is that he plans to have the completed draft of all the chapters, all ten chapters available to us by the next meeting in April. And that he's asking us to look at the first half at that meeting in April, and the second half at the meeting in May, possibly two meetings in May. And then to essentially bless, if you will, the plan at that point, which then means it can, this isn't formal approval. It is where we can send it to the state, who will distribute it to the county and other, whoever else wants to look at it and provide us comments back on what's been written within sixty days. The end of that sixty days, we would have their comments, which would have to be made public, or we would make public. And then if there was any incorporating that had to be done or changes made as a result of that, we would do that. And then have a follow-on meeting or two to formally approve the plan, which then would go to the town council. And the town council can review it. They can reject it, they can approve it, they can modify it. If they send it back to us, then it has to go through. Now, I didn't mention the public hearing. After we get the remarks back from the state and the county, then we would have a public hearing. And then after the public hearing, we could approve the plan. So then it goes to the town council. So really, our work is upfront. And then it moves to the town council where they can act on it as they see fit. I think that's, any corrections for that, Chris?
I think you've got it. Well put.
Okay, it's seven forty-five. We said there'll be ten minutes for short-term rentals discussion. I would guess that Commissioner Evans would like to lead off, so I will ask him to take the mic.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for your comments, everyone. I'd like to see all or most, as many questions answered as we possibly can that you asked us. As far as the short-term rentals go, I agree with Cindy and Wes and a couple others. They made comments that we really don't have time to discuss this on our end. And I propose that we push it for deliberation in town council because they're the ones that are going to need to make the decision on whether to allow them or not. And if there's any zoning changes that need to be made based on their decisions, then it can come back to us for those changes. But I really think that we kind of need to push it to town council. With Chris's recommendations that he sent out on that document, I think, I think that was a well put together document that we could, that they could really use for deliberations.
Okay, is there a motion there?
Yes, I, well, yeah, I'll make the motion to propose to send it to town council for deliberation.
So the motion, as I understand it, is to send the report that was prepared by the zoning administrator to the town council for their consideration.
Yes.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, discussion, any discussion that would, someone like to make a point, raise an issue, discuss the motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner Greengold.
Hi. I understand his desire to want to push it to the town council. I think it would behoove us as a planning and zoning commission to have this meeting, or not this particular meeting, but down the road. I think we need to have as many people get involved with the communication and the decision process as possible. And I do know that, I know that everybody thinks there's been a lot of people that have, that have reviewed this and understand it. But even none of my neighbors even know what's going on right now. They're kind of focused on COVID and trying to get out of COVID. They're not watching the Zoom meetings here. You know, unless they have a vested interest, they don't know this is going on. So I'm afraid that the town council also at this time would not get the town input that they need to receive. I think if we push it out a little bit, once we see COVID open, once we open up after COVID, hopefully that'll be by the summertime. We might be able to get back to a meeting where we might get people in person to actually communicate about this subject. Because I think there is a lot of angst, I talked to my neighbor the other day about it, very concerned that she thought it was a dead deal. And now all of a sudden, she's telling me about her neighbor who's illegally doing short-term rentals. And she, you know, she doesn't know what to do about it. So I'm concerned that we're getting a lot of desire and push from people who might financially benefit from it. But the people who live here aren't being heard, and they're the ones who have to live with it. So I'm sad to think that we might move it on to the town council. And indeed, we could be a forum that they could all come to and feel comfortable communicating with. So I'm against moving it to the town council. So that's all I have to say about it.
Okay. Ms. Morall, I thought you had something to say about it earlier.
Yes, I agree with Commissioner Greengold. I, my understanding is, it feels to me like we're not doing our due diligence as a commission. My understanding is that we make the recommendation to the town council, and then they vote on it. And I feel like, I agree. I think that it seems we've heard from a finite few. But I don't think, although it, you know, it seems to be represented that it's the entire town. I don't have that sense. I know my neighbors, you know, have shared with me that they are not in favor of the short-term rentals. But the problem is, they don't necessarily avail themselves of the forum. And I'm not sure the best way to get them involved so they can actually present their position on this issue. So I do not recommend sending it to the town council.
All right, let's see, Mr. Larson or Commissioner Blackwelder? Any more comments, any more discussion?
I just think that, you know, Chris has done a real good job and has given us all the combinations and permutations of possibilities. and permutations of possibilities for short-term rentals. And to, for us to, I guess what what we would wish we would have is enough time to go through all those and come up with a consensus of which combinations of of short-term rental possibilities we would approve, but that would be so time-consuming that I think it's, it's not plausible to me. So I I think if we have to undertake it, we have to realize that it's a major undertaking to come up with a tangible answer for them, for the town council.
Okay, Commissioner Blackwelder, did you have something you want to say?
Yeah, um, so what we're doing with this is we're pushing it to the town council in an informative form, and I think it's important for everybody who's concerned about BMBs to to realize that there's towns all across America going through this, and it's not a quick process, and they do kick it back and forth from the town council to the planning and zoning, and they get public input, and they take their time, and they try to identify the issues that concern their citizens, and there's there's nothing wrong with that, and there's no reason to rush that. Right now, we have a priority, and that's a comprehensive plan, and the town council is also involved in this issue and would benefit from Chris's report, which is why I'd like to send it forward. And then we can take our cue from them to decide, do they want us to put it back on our agenda at this time when we're, you know, really focusing on the comprehensive plan, or do they want to deliberate on their own, or do they, you know, it's it's ultimately their decision in the end, so I think that to send them the report in the informative form and then allow them to make the decision of how we proceed as a town to continue to address this issue is the right way to go.
Okay, is there any more discussion? I think we've heard from everybody. We have a motion, I believe we have a second. Is that correct? Who seconded?
Hello? Hello?
All right, so, all in favor?
Hey!
Wait, I see hands. Who is this?
What, what?
Jacqueline.
No, hi, guys, I've been raising my hand, but no one saw me. Can you hear me now?
Is this for the public comment?
Yes.
There's a little button down on the bottom of your screen. If you scroll down to the bottom of your screen, you'll see, so it's raised hand.
I have it.
Now, I see your hand up now.
Can you hear me now?
I can, but we finished, we finished that, we're gonna have more public comment at the end.
All time. My hand has been raised the whole time. Guys, can you hear me now?
You have two minutes, go ahead.
Okay, can you hear me? I just want to make sure you can hear me. Okay, my hand was raised the whole time. I'm sorry that you guys didn't see me. I'm not the kind of person that really honestly likes my face to be on the internet. I'm shy, I'm quiet. I've been a member of this community for more than twenty-five years, okay? And I am a person who came to this community visiting by short-term rentals, and that's how I found this community. It's been a part of our community for many, many, many years, and there are people who come back to this community year after year after year with their families. There has been cards sent out to every single person in the community, letting them know that this was something that they wanted to discussion. There was a discussion time, and people asked for people's opinions, and I am going to motion as a person of a citizen of this community that we communicate really well with people, because I didn't know anything of this was going on until until somebody let me know about it, and I guess that means, you know, making sure you pay attention all the time, but we are in, you know, the middle of a pandemic, so people are busy. This is something that has affected homeowners who have been doing this for years without any problems for anybody, and you've taken away people's income who depended on it, who that's all that they had, who never caused any problems for anybody, who never hurt anybody, who never had any problems with anybody, and I would propose that you do some kind of common sense rules and some type of moratorium, and if anybody's having a problem with somebody, then take away their licensing or their rules or whatever it is that they need to do, but be fair about it with people and make sure that people, you know, know about it. The people that I have spoken to, nobody has ever had a problem with anybody, and if there was somebody that was in a problem, then they should have spoken to the people and said, hey, I have a problem with you, and allowed people to to fix that that problem, but to take away people's income in the middle of a pandemic.
Time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Okay, we have the motion, we have a second.
Can we review the motion again, please, Chairman Brown?
Is to send the report that was prepared by the zoning administrator on short-term rentals to the town council. Is that, that's correct, isn't it, Mr. Evans?
Yes, and I also want to state that I don't, I don't want it to seem like we're just dumping this to town council, because we are pressed for time, and I I'm more than willing to share my my feedback with the council on some of my concerns and how we can fix them. I just, I would hope that all of us could could do the same. If any councilman would like some feedback, we could provide that.
All right, so, but the motion is correct to send the report prepared by the zoning administrator to the town council for their consideration.
Yes.
All right, so let's go around the room. Commissioner Blackwelder, vote in favor of sending it to the town council or deferring to later?
In favor.
And Commissioner Greenble?
No.
No. Commissioner Evans?
In favor.
Okay, Commissioner Burt?
Not in favor.
Okay, and Commissioner Larson?
In favor.
In favor. Vote is three to two. We will send the report, make it available to the town council so that they can review it and see the what zoning administrator has written. Thank you, everyone. It's now going on eight o'clock. We had a request to review some alternative processes for updating the comprehensive plan. That was Commissioner Blackwelder. Would you like to take the floor?
I will, and I will brief. Thank you, Chairman Brown. I did have a quick conversation with Chris, and we discussed retaining the method of him showing us the track changes and what was changed each time we re-review the the draft, so we can see it in hard writing. I think that's transparent for us and transparent for the community. We also discussed keeping, where possible, the current zoning districts, so as not to not to create confusion when we are writing the codes, and so the current zoning districts that we have are the maritime district, resource conservation, residential plan development, residential low density, residential medium density, residential high density, residential village, and commercial. And so we did discuss, where possible, keeping those districts consistent while while discussing the the plan and the broad overview, we can still keep, nothing's really changing enough to require most of those districts to stay to stay to change. And where new districts are needed, we can add them, and then additionally, we would, any changes that we made to the current districts or any new districts, we would refer our changes back to the current comprehensive plan with a reasoning that's addresses why we've made those changes. So it's it's kind of two parts, our discussion, and I don't I don't know that I need a motion to to do that. It was a discussion about how we can work efficiently, how we can streamline what we're doing so that it's transparent and understandable to the public and to us, and so we can keep track of what we're doing. And I maybe I I would ask Chris for some comments on my comments.
I thought that Lori had a really good point, and as it turns out, some of her suggestions would actually, I think, streamline and make it our our work and actually make it easier to understand when people are comparing the old versus the new or the proposed. So, for instance, that rather than, and rather than having a map to call certain parts of the town cottage or cottage neighborhoods, simply referring to them as medium density and residential village density, because those are the districts. So you know, the continuity there is really important, and that's, so I'm I'm I don't know what else to say. I think we're we're right on the same page, and I don't know that we need to spend much more time on that topic, but it was very informative today, meeting with Lori.
Okay, anyone else want to comment on that? Any thoughts? Jeff, Larson?
No, makes good sense to me.
Popped up on my screen, that's why I called. Okay, let's move on then. It's eight o'clock. Move to the work session on the comprehensive plan and turn it over to Chris, who will take us through what he has.
Okay. I just need to shift out of a couple of documents here. And perhaps, let me begin by just commenting and addressing Mr. Luckett. I don't know that he's still on the call, but I I looked for him, but I don't know he's there.
Here.
Oh, good, thank you, Gary. So we have that concept drawn up of a, as a potential town center, and we'll be talking about that tonight. The intent in drawing this, this is a sketch, of course, is to show that access, one way of accessing the town center can be through that service drive that is on the town's property, which is between your property and the town hall. So the the road itself would be on the town's property, but the buildings that are shown, some buildings are there, look to be mostly on your property, which is just an indication that the town would be open to you or whoever owns your property, developing it more intensively if you wanted to. But we still should follow up with you to talk through this, because you might really have some great commentary to offer here, but it was really essentially to open up the possibility that you could actually do considerably more with your your lot there if you chose to, and if you didn't, then it remains the same. We don't need it to develop a town center, it's just an option. So I hope that explanation helps a little bit, and and I I will follow up with you, if that's okay with you.
Yes, it is. It's digestible at the moment.
Okay, thank you. So we have a a land use draft, and this draft has been through a number of different iterations, and it's been developed over time and at multiple meetings and presentations with the the commission. So it has a quite a lineage, and it reflects a lot of discussion and deliberation. And I kind of think that, once we get through this most important part of the plan, and land use typically is, I think the other things will fall into place, because everything kind of hinges on land use. And it is always the most difficult part of a comprehensive plan, and I hope that we can assemble a lot of consensus and agreement and benefit from the people that have spoken tonight and who spoke at the moratorium hearings as well. So the commissioners, you've had this copy for a couple of weeks now, at least a week or or more. Can I just ask you all to give me your sense of, just throw out, you know, and speak, first-person speak is fine with me. How would you like me to review this? I mean, I could go through it page by page, I can just focus on the items that Larry and I sent to you as consensus items that we need to focus on. I can give a bigger explanation that would benefit, you know, fellow residents who are here tonight. And there are certain parts that I would like to elaborate on as well, but I want to make sure this is tailored to what you need tonight.
Okay, I I would hope that all the commissioners had a chance to to read through it. I certainly did, and I have, I don't need to have it read back to me. So I will start, and maybe that will stimulate some of the others to comment, but we'll go around with each commissioner commenting on their observations. First, a number of statements are made in there about Chesapeake Beach, North Beach. I believe Commissioner Evans may have pointed out some of the things, there is, we say there's no dentist or medical in Chesapeake Beach or in North Beach. North Beach has finance and dentists up there, investment people. I was little, as I looked through the the draft, it almost looked like Mama Lucia's, the newest restaurant in town, was forgotten. In fact, that whole section is is mentioned, but it's not one of the four commercial areas that we we talk about developing. And they have between Horizons, Mama Lucia's, and those three businesses there, Lido's, the physical therapy and the fast store. They probably have almost as much parking there as we have at the other end of town. So it just just seems to me there's there's a lot there that shouldn't be, certainly has to be mentioned in the report, maybe more than it is now, but and also, as I go through the commercial discussions, I went to the town website a couple of weeks ago, I didn't do it today, but there are, I think, some ninety businesses, many of them are listed two or three times under different categories, so it's not a total of ninety. But there are a lot of businesses, most of them in homes, operating out of their garage or a home business. That isn't really addressed. Does it need to be addressed? This is a question I think that we need to answer, but there are, that that, to me, that's a trend that people are starting to work more out of their homes, have their own home business, and it's something we're gonna see more of in the future. On the map, it shows, I've I've found the colors almost indistinguishable between the the category of neighborhood and town. They're they're so close, it's hard to see which is which on the map, minor point. And map three and map four, we have the commercial focal point on, I believe, map three and map four has has the businesses, the three, Lido's, the therapy office and store next to it, but it doesn't show Mama Lucia's. I think that needs to be cleaned up. Let's see, a minor, minor point on page, page seventeen, you talk about Let's see, uh, a minor, minor point on page, page 17, you talk about, uh, the 2020 plan was first applied to the resource conservation category, but earlier you referred to it as, uh, the comprehensive plan in 2002 was the first use of the resource conservation. So those just need to be consistent. The, the big one for me, and, uh, I've, I've said it before, and it's, it, um, you know, at the town council meeting, and, uh, I think our first public speaker tonight, uh, mentioned it, we've, we've shown drawings, uh, based on state, um, estimates of what's going to be flooded and underwater, uh, which includes basically the, the whole town center that we're proposing, along with, uh, uh, all the condominiums across the way, or I mean, the townhouses across the way. And I, I personally, I just shake my head and say, who's going to do that? I mean, why would you invest in an area to build a new town center that we are telling people is going to be underwater in the next, or at least flooding frequently in the next 20 to 30 years? And, and it seems to me, if, if it goes forward, any building in that area, uh, puts a, uh, a burden, if not a mortgage, on the town to ensure that if, if, for example, one of the large, uh, condominiums got built, uh, we'd have 60 residents there, uh, when there's flooding, they're going to want, want to be able to get to their residence, even if the residence is built sufficiently high, so that it's high and dry, we're gonna, the town is going to provide roads and access and, uh, so it's, um, it, it ju, I just shake my head when I look at that and just, I, I can't believe we're, we're proposing a town center in that area of town. I guess my question is, I didn't see, uh, there on the last page, I think 27 or 28, where the town hall is, and which one of, you had layer one, two, and three? Town hall isn't mentioned, I'm wondering which one it's in. But, uh, on page 27, you, there's the layer one, layer two, layer three, I think those are great ideas. Um, personally, I think there should be a, uh, a moratorium on building in those areas until we get this master flood plan that is proposed and the comprehensive plan completed, so we know what, as, uh, one of our, our public speakers said, so they, we know where the bulkheads will be, what the raising of the roads will have to be, all of those issues before we start, uh, approving, uh, development in low-lying areas. So on the last, in, uh, layer three, it says, uh, redevelopment will be treated the same as new development in layer two. But it, when you read layer two, there's no real distinguishing between layer redevelopment and new development. So I'm, it, that, that's confusing to me about what, what we're saying under layer three for redevelopment will be treated the same as new development, because it looks to me like both are treated the same in layer two. So that, um, that wraps up my observations. In general, I thought it was, uh, uh, pretty well done and hits most of the marks that the commission has been talking about. And let me turn it over to, let me do, maybe in this order, Commissioner Larson, Commissioner Evans, Commissioner Boral, Commissioner Greengold, and follow up with the vice chairman, Commissioner Blackwelder at the end. So, Commissioner Larson, did you have any, uh, observations, comments on the draft comprehensive plan?
None that would be particularly, uh, illustrative. I'll pass to somebody who's probably understands it in more detail than I do.
Okay, well, thank you, thank you. Commissioner Evans?
Can you hear me? Yeah, uh, I think I already sent one or two, uh, observations, but one of my questions was on page seven. It says, we'll need to use creative land use strategies for commercial uses. I was just wondering if you had anything in particular in mind, or is that something that we need to discuss? Cause I know that we, uh, kind of determined that the town would like to see more commercial uses in town, um, such as ice cream shops, bike shops. I'm just wondering if we need to discuss, uh, what kind of strategies to use to, uh, to obtain that? Yeah, I think, I think if we could just go over the, the gray, um, items with the line through it that we need to revisit, um, I think that would be the best, best way to do it, instead of reviewing the whole thing all over again.
Right. Yeah, even based on Larry's comments, I think I'm gonna, uh, once you guys go through your initial comments, take time to pull up some slides and go through the, this and emails and, and answer each of your questions and then carry the conversation on that way. Sorry, Mr. Chairman, go ahead.
So you want to show some slides now, is that right?
Oh, yeah, but, uh, I, in response to your comments, it made me think, well, why don't I just go ahead and give a more formal kind of slide presentation to explain things? But I, I thought, why not just wait for the rest of the members to get through their initial observations?
All right.
It's kind of effective, just allows me to focus on what, what I need to.
All right, Commissioner Boral?
Um, yeah, the, uh, my comment basically, uh, was about the, uh, the high-risk area, the low-lying areas. I, I happened to be out, uh, I guess, uh, last week after, after it rained on Thursday, and I was, uh, I was walking in the morning, and, um, that area by the Seagate community greatly flooded. I mean, there was at least three to four inches of water, and I think that had been, you know, three days later from after the rain. So I think it's absolutely a, a concern, and, um, obviously, I think it needs to be addressed. And, you know, in reading the report where it says, you know, about talking about raising the ev, you know, the elevation of the land or build structural flood defenses, um, you know, to include seawalls, the raise, the bulkhead, I, I was just curious how to address that, especially when those, that area, um, i- is set for greater development. And I, I just noted that, as well as in concert with the, uh, the town center, um, you know, as well as thinking about in regards to the pier, how are we going to address, you know, the increasing, uh, water levels, um, through, you know, in this, in this draft and in the actual plan? And I think, uh, it would help, be helpful for me if I saw, um, a little bit more information about those challenges.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Greengold?
I'm fairly confused on what I'm trying to do right now, but, uh, I've got a lot of comments throughout the entire 28 pages, and I hate to go through it all, but, um, I think you generally want an idea of what the whole draft is like, or the whole land use section is all about. Chris, is that what you're looking for right now, just seeking a little bit of direction? I mean, what do you, what do you want right now? Because I've got a lot of comments. But let me just, let me just start by saying two things. The first thing I think is that the land use objectives should be rearranged. And I think one of the, well, the first one, enhancing the residential qualities of the town's original neighborhoods, I think that's a, a good one for the first one. But I think the second one has got to be, adapt to the vulnerabilities of sea level rise, because just as Kathleen just said, we have got to address all those flooding areas that are currently being flooded, like at Seagate and all these other little areas that can't wait for, um, for any of the new plans or maps or anything else. We know, we've got to address some certain, some, some specific areas. So I think, uh, the number five objective should go under number two and push everything down, because I really think that's got to be one of our priorities, is the, um, uh, the water issues. And then when we get to, um, um, expanding the commercial development, um, I, you know, and I know that's part of your town center plan, I'm not sure I'm for the town center plan. As Chairman, uh, the Chairman Brown said, um, why, when we see those maps and we saw an incredible, um, uh, report from Chris last week at the town council meeting, that whole area is going to be underwater, um, we would be remiss in trying to plan anything in that area, except for maybe some active park areas, such as a skate park, which I see wasn't even built, and it was in the 2010 plan. There were other things that we can do in that area that would bring the community together, we don't have to just sit around and have a cup of coffee, we could have, actually just have active park areas, instead of trying to put it that big, um, commercial slash, uh, townhome center in there and, and try and develop that up, which then will create a lot more problems that we have to resolve. So I, I guess I'm a little confused on, on what you want me to comment on, I've got comments all throughout, but those are my major, um, my major concerns, is rethinking that town center, if we really need it, if we really want it, do we want it, you know, in, in the form of a construction, are we going to act a park area back there? Um, I'm not sure we really came to that conclusion, and I know that Chairman Brown actually put that as one of the things he wanted to talk about in our discussion. So even though we've, you know, we've got some, um, speakers who are concerned about having their property taken away, I'm not sure we've ever come to that conclusion, that that is a good thing. On, if I may just back up, and on a second note, I wanted to thank the town council for, um, giving us a lot of support. They were really highly, um, uh, very generous on their comments, the planning commission and all the work that we are trying to do and accomplish. And even though I know the people that call in may not be happy with some of our comments or decisions or whatever, we're trying our best, and at least the town council understands that and knows that. So thank you for making those nice generous comments, um, all of you. But going back to the-
If I could break in just a second, they, if you haven't taken a look at the work, working session that the town council did, and they first considered the moratorium, I think it's very instructive, because, uh, there were many public speakers, and, uh, the town council men and women, uh, expressed, uh, they were a little, um, more expressive, let me put it that way, I think, at the working session. And it, uh, it's about 30 minutes of that meeting that, uh, is worth looking at again. I'm sorry for interrupting.
Oh, that's okay, that's okay. But, uh, I, I agree with, um, Jonathan, that perhaps we need to go through, and all the areas that Chris had in yellow, maybe we all need to go back and just quickly, as a group, discuss just the, the areas in yellow, because those, weren't those the ones, Chris, that we had questions on, or that we hadn't really discussed, or that you include, you had added on to?
Well, those are the changes I made in response to the latest meeting we had on this in December. But the, the, the ones that are shaded in gray were the ones that I thought we hadn't decided on yet, that, that we just didn't, there was just disagreement or just not enough, no one said amen to that yet.
But you didn't say amen to the town center, and you didn't put gray on that.
Yeah, I kind of thought we, we had.
Because Chairman Brown had included that in his things that we needed to discuss, so I was, I was unconsciously about that as well. So, um, maybe what I will do is turn it over to, uh, Lori, and just see what are the comments she has about it then.
I think we're skipping Kathleen.
Okay, we can hear you.
I think Kathleen just went.
Yes, I did.
It's hard to keep track on Zoom.
Friends together, okay. Uh, so it's, am I last? I'm, okay, so-
That's for last.
Um, I continue to think that this plan as it stands doesn't meet the mark of, uh, addressing the fact that our commercial diversity and our commercial areas, uh, will be depleted if we continue to allow, allow the residential uses, um, in the area which is the center of town. I agree with Cindy's comments, that the town center in, especially in that low-lying area, can be, um, predominantly recreational, um, or very low-impact slash low-investment type of, um, build, not residential, where people could be displaced. You know, I, I envision them being small business enterprises, if anything, and recreation. The 2010 comprehensive plan alludes to areas around Fishing Creek and, um, areas along 261 and 260 as being potential areas for commercial. And I think that because we made a, a very high-impact, um, approval with the new rod and reel, um, we need to now free up the road and free up our resources by reducing residential growth. And that is, in fact, what the, the public, that's what they have indicated on their surveys. Uh, we did make a motion in August to limit residential growth and focus on adding commercial and recreational amenities. I don't think that, that we've done that yet. I think we're still trying to add resi, more residences in places, and I, I, I do want to have that discussion, we don't have to have it tonight or right now, because I know we're going to, um, kind of regroup how we're categorizing things, so we can see what's going on better. But I do still want to have that conversation. I think that, that idea is, is very strongly presented in the 2010 comprehensive plan, and, um, I think that we can affect that in this comprehensive plan. And I, I'd, I'd like to see us do that. As far as, um, the town center graphic and, and description, I, I think I've, I've sent something indicating that I don't think that that level of detail is appropriate for the comprehensive plan, especially when I know that there's a committee that's going to be, um, talking about this area. So I, I really don't think, and I agree with, with the gentleman that owns Traders, um, we shouldn't be adding to our comprehensive plan a picture of anything on anyone's property. And, uh, no one should worry about that, because the town council did confirm with Chris in their town council meeting, that there would be no eminent domain in this comprehensive plan. So, so that's not a worry, that's just a detail that we need to, to fix in our, in our drafts. Additionally, I think that, um, we, I think Larry touched on this, the, the idea that, there's a higher risk with a higher capacity building in a flood zone, there's a higher investment, when you involve residents, you have, uh, a higher impact on the town, you have a, a higher obligation on the town to take care of them. And really, if we, if we saturate the interior of our town, the story's over, there's, there's nothing more but residents and three restaurants with a concierge, there's no room left for anything else. And, and our residents have indicated that they want to go out and go to a coffee shop. They would love to have some outdoor dining options. They want the recreation, they want us to invest in trails and, and other forms of recreation, they want a, a town center, and it, and town center to, most people, I believe, means something to do, not a building to see, and not people to crowd the roads. So that, that's just another point that I'd like to make. I think that if we are going to, um, re-categorize the districts, I think we need to do that before we, we make specific, um- I think we need to do that before we, we make specific, um, decisions. There might be some we can make. Um, but I really think we need to, to, we need to define the districts, what we're going to call them, and, and they can't be overlapping. We need to be able to look at the map and say, this is here, this is here, this is here, not, um, it, it's a little bit overwhelming to try to figure out what is going on in the, in the different housing districts in this form. Um, and then my last comment is, um, we have a growth allocation method and a forest conservation, uh, section in our code. And I'm, I'm just wondering if, if we are going to support that in this comprehensive plan. And those are my comments.
Okay, uh, Chris, you want to, uh, walk through your slides and give the commission some time to think here about? We need to make some decisions, you know, we, we need to give Chris some guidance. And each of us giving him a different set of guidance doesn't help him. We need consensus. So, uh, uh, the seven or so questions that I had put in my note were, uh, collected from, from notes Chris had sent me that he didn't, he didn't think he had consensus on. And if he doesn't have consensus, then we don't have a plan. So, uh, Chris, if you'll walk through it, if you can highlight, if you would, where you need a decision and maybe we can get one or maybe we have to defer it. I don't know, but, uh, we need to know where the decisions have to be made. So far, none of us have, uh, proposed a specific decision for you to take to change the plan that's been proposed. So, uh, as of right now, um, except for the things you've highlighted where the decisions need to be made, we have no other specific proposals to change it. So over to you, Chris.
Okay, thank you. Um, I'm going to share my screen so I can work through some slides. And I'm going to move from the, some slides, graphics back to the report, back and forth. And, um, and in so doing, I hope to answer, um, most, if not all of the questions I, that, uh, citizens raised in the beginning of the meeting too. I took a lot of notes. I, I don't know that I'll get to all of them, but I hope, I hope I do.
I don't know, I don't know if everybody else is capable of doing this, but I, I can put, uh, the chapter five up on my, my additional screen so I can see where you're at. Oh, good, good. You've got it up there. Great. Thank you.
Okay, okay. So that works. Good. So first of all, let's start with the, um, I thought, why not start with the basic goals? And Cindy had mentioned a realignment of these goals and I'm all for it. I actually often thought that the, um, that this goal about adapting to sea level rise might be the most significant, uh, and impactful one. And, and it ought to go in front, but then I didn't really make a judgment about it. But I, I'm happy to move that to number two. And, um, so the first one, um, and I don't want to spend too much time on this. I'm not going to read them all, but I want everyone to know that the first goal here, um, would be, as we said, enhancing the qualities of these existing older neighborhoods. And, um, that's not, and to answer Bob Carpenter's, uh, question, that's not meaning that, uh, every street gets its own sidewalk or curb or gutter. It just means that the town has a program for responding to concerns that residents make about drainage, uh, infrastructure. We have, uh, places in the middle subdivision, um, in the residential village zone where the drainage pipes are at a lower elevation than the, the tide. So water doesn't drain out to the bay and it backs up on streets. That's a fundamental issue that we need to resolve in order to protect the investment that people make in the property. So that's a government job. And so that's why I thought it was, uh, priority number one. And there are other things too, like, uh, bike paths and pedestrian ways that are in the adopted bike plan or pedestrian plan that the, the council has just adopted. So that's what we're talking about. The, um, number two, expanding the commercial development, including tourism, the comment we added in response to the commission's, uh, comments previously. This reflects, uh, the, I thought, the very clear appeal that the Economic Development Committee led by Councilman Jaworski made to this body, um, about two years ago. Now, many of you weren't there because we have such a new commission, but it's very important. And this is actually led a lot of how we had, it informed how we addressed other concerns. For instance, uh, why have a town center? Well, one reason to have a town center because it provides space for buildings that house commercial properties. Uh, it allows for, uh, the people that are operating businesses in their homes to contribute to the vitality of the town and create a downtown. And, um, and we do have a lot of people in home occupations, uh, we didn't have, I, I approve them. I approve home occupations and, uh, I know we have quite a few. And many of them start by asking me, can we find any land, any space in town to operate my business or grow my business? And we, we facilitate that to the extent we can. But there's really no limited space for commercial development. So that's what this is primarily about.
Chris, Chris, are you saying that there is a report, uh, by, uh, Councilman Jaworski from a couple of years ago?
Um, well, there, there was a, a report given at a planning commission meeting, a presentation. He talked to the, to the planning commission with his whole committee, community was there, including representatives from the county and North Beach. Uh, I think you were there, there, you might remember when we didn't make a big deal about it, but, uh, but it really informed our work and remember, uh, at their request-
I do not remember it, so that's why I'm asking. I, if there's a, a written report someplace, I think it'd be good for certainly the new commissioners.
Can I, can I, can I, can I ask- Larry, can I just add something to that? Cause I was at that meeting actually. I was one of the original members there. Um, he was giving us a report about economic development in the town. But Chris, to be fair, that was before we have the new opportunities that we have now with, um, um, people working out of their homes. There is a lot of change in the last two years since he's actually worked on that commit- commission or committee. And I can't help but think that there isn't new thoughts about how much commercial activity we really need in it, or retail that we really need in the town at this point with the fact that people are, uh, either not commuting or they're working out of their house, whatever. But I'm just wondering if a report that's two years or three years old is still relevant today. Um, I, I, I think either, um, we need to discuss that as a group again or, um, you know, we need to, we need to ask, how much are we willing, willing to risk as far as intense development is concerned? When we really don't even know how intense the hotel area is going to be once it gets going with all of this new development? So we don't know what the infrastructure is going to be to support any new commercial development. Right now with the two lane road, I'm not so sure we want to really go that route because until COVID is over and we get back to normal, we don't know what the intensity is going to do to these, uh, little roads that we have. So that would be my concern about putting that in there as a major, um, a major objective.
Well, the, the, the concern raised by the committee wasn't just about having more space for commercial expansion. It was about how we revitalize the commercial space we have now that has for decades, um, underperformed. And there is vacancy, considerable vacancy on the gateway into town. And you might remember there's been a lot of talk at the, at the initial public meetings, how do we revitalize that gateway into town? How, how do we make it a pedestrian friendly, it's going to vibrant place where you could actually walk to if you lived in the area and get those properties back, producing businesses that would be a benefit to the community, you know? And ideas like restaurants and cafes came up like that. So that's why we thought, why not try to link that area to 60 and E and F streets into, you know, kind of the town center idea and really sort of work towards connecting the resort function with these other disparate, um, commercial centers. So that's, that, that's what that is about too. It's not just about adding more space for more businesses. Um, and so, I, I, I mean, did, do you, does the commission feel that, uh, you would like to remove a, a goal that says we should work to revitalize our commercial properties?
No, not remove it, but I think we have to include in that line. We have to say within the boundaries determined by current infrastructure. Because what we're doing is we're just saying, let's just put in all this commercial. We don't consider what the hotels, what the new development. We've got 20,000 square feet more of hotel coming in the next year, but yet we don't know how that's going to impact, you know, mirrors and C Street and all of the development around, uh, Fishing Creek. So my concern is if we add all this in, at worst case scenario, we could develop all of that area off of 261 and then never be able to move on, on any of those roadways. So I'm just concerned about putting too much focus on commercial development when we don't really know what's going to happen with the hotel yet.
Okay, so what I'm reviewing now is a goal and, uh, it's, and, and how we respond to that goal is what the plan's going to be about. But, and, and so I, let me go through the goals, then we'll get back to the plan recommendations. And if you, we need to tone that down, you know, we can begin doing that. Um, anybody else have a view on, on this? You, you okay with the, the direction Cindy's-
I'd, I'd like to get a, a run around the commission to get a decision on whether we need to change number two on page 10. So, um, uh, let me, well, let me, is, is, uh, how many believe that number two as it is, I hate to say needs to be changed because that's open ended. Nobody knows what that means. Uh, so let me say how many will, are fine with it the way it is written. And then if it's, they weren't fine with it, then we can talk about how we have to change it. So I can go around, please, and, uh, ask each commissioner, say, yes, it's okay or no, it needs to be changed. Um, so if I can start with Commissioner Larson, I hate to put you on the spot, but, uh, is, uh, number two need to be changed?
Well, I'd like to hear somebody else's opinion of what, what it need to be changed to. So I, I'm going to pass and listen to somebody else's change.
All right. Um, uh, Commissioner Evans.
I think the change is okay. I mean, I think, I think, uh, it's our responsibility to, um, try to develop and approve plans based on our current infrastructure. So I think Cindy's point just kind of emphasized that I, I don't think that's a problem.
Okay, so you would agree that it needs to be changed?
Yeah, I think that's okay.
Okay, Commissioner Brol.
Um, I think it, uh, needs to be changed. I just want to add that, that area in green, um, after town where it says, but within the boundaries of infrastructure. It, will that remain?
Well, yeah, I think that's the change that, uh, I think Jonathan was referring to. Um, I, I have to figure that, how to put that into the right context. I mean, but basically saying commercial development, yeah, we want to foster it and promote revitalization, but within the boundaries of our ability to handle it, you know, from an infrastructure standpoint.
Yeah, I think that's, that's pertinent and I, it, it makes the whole paragraph for me. So if that's in there, I think I'm fine with it.
Okay.
Hey, uh, Commissioner Greengold, you've expressed an opinion to change it, I think.
What was Kathleen, can I ask what Kathleen was talking about? Was there something already in there, Kathleen, I didn't see about boundaries? What, what were you talking about?
I'm typing it into the screen now. If you look at your screen, um-
Oh, I see. I'm sorry. I was looking at my, my own, okay. Be within the boundaries of current infrastructure. I mean, if you don't put the word current, then you could be saying, oh, well, we'll change this down the road and it never gets changed. So you have to say current infrastructure because too many times they, they build it and then they don't, you know, modify the infrastructure to meet the needs of the, of the intent of the, uh, in, increased or intensified use of that area.
Well, the only thing about that, uh, Commissioner Greengold is number one, uh, it, the goal number one just talks about improving infrastructure. So if we're going to add current to number two, then probably that should be reflected, I think, in number one to be consistent.
But number two is about the commercial area and number one is about the residential area. Are we talking about two different areas?
Well, they might be two different areas, but they both talk about infrastructure. So if we're going to refer to current infrastructure and two, I think we should make that same point in item, in goal number one. Cause otherwise, if your point is that we don't, we mean specifically the current infrastructure and it, it's very specific. Number one just says a program of improving infrastructure. And I mean, I guess you could say it implied, but I just think as far as consistency, since you're both talking about, um, mention infrastructure, I think they, we would have to be clear and specific saying that current infrastructure. My, my thought, but.
Okay, thank you. I think I, I think I understand. I'm not sure.
I think this is well, good enough for now. And, um, in the final version, we'll have this language incorporated and I'll think through that, that-
But you understand what I'm trying to say though about commercial-
Absolutely, yeah.
You got to make sure it doesn't outpace our infrastructure.
Yeah, like roads and water and sewer and pumping-
And we also can, I'm sorry, I don't, that's fine on my time, but can we add in number one, um, the addition of adding neighborhood parks to that particular point? Because to me, the neighborhood park thing is part of the development of all the other infrastructure in those neighborhoods.
I, I, I think that builds on the work we did before where everyone agreed there's a deficiency in our neighborhood parks. We just simply make, we meet no national or local standard on neighborhood parks. So why not add it?
Well, that's what I was asking you to do, just so that people don't forget. We need to add those along with other-
It's on the radar. We're thinking about it as we're, we're working with neighborhoods. I mean, obviously with some of these things, when you get into, what you do is actually meet with residents and say, you know, what, what issues are of most concern to you and how would we go about addressing it? And, um, that may come up as a specific recommendation in one area and maybe not in other areas. But at least having it in the list is good.
Well, the other question, I'm sorry if I'm hogging, but where it says enhance the residential, I would like to put in there enhance and protect because I would like us to try and protect some of the vintage. And I like to call it vintage because it's part of the heritage of the town. I would like to try and encourage these owners of these cottages and whatnot to try and redevelop and redo them in the same style. And I mean, we have that adorable cottage as we come into 260, right there by the chicken place or the, the liquor place. They, they did a wonderful job. I just want to see if we can encourage that protection of that vintage look in this cottage area. Um, so I don't know if anybody agrees with me on that, but I think that is something we need to put in there.
Cindy, uh, wouldn't that be part of one of Larry's questions for the design standards? To address design and compatibility? Is that, would that fit in with that?
Um, I'd have to get back to Larry's questions. Um, I think Larry's question had to do with the standard, the architectural standards with their signage and all that, wasn't it? I've got so many pieces of paper here, I'm trying to-
Whether to recommend design standards be adopted to address design and compatibility?
I think when I refer to protect, there are a lot of towns that actually do things like provide low interest loans for people who want to renovate these cottages. They, they help provide historical data on how to, you know, how to redo them. So when I say protect, it really is a different level. Um, there were towns that actually have, you know, staff that just work with people who own these older, older homes and try and, and help them restore them. Um, so I think that's a little different than, than that particular item, which is more about a general architectural look to the town. Um, where you clean up the signage and make, you know, you know, um, common street signage that looks similar and that kind of thing. Um, so I think, anyway, if you don't mind putting protect in there, I think it might offer a little bit of insight to what people can do with those cottages or not.
Yeah, I see the difference. And in fact, I, I can actually explain that, that a little bit more in this draft.
Okay.
I think that's a, I think you find a lot of support for that, um, as long as it's not kind of a regulatory thing that restricts someone's ability to change.
Right.
It's incentive based or encouraging.
Yes.
A lot of towns find that- A lot of towns find that very beneficial.
Yes.
Residents do. So the last, or number three would be um, the, the remaining stands of forest, those resource, showing them as resource conservation and they, they are, right now, they're, uh, they have the same zoning as the neighborhoods they're attached to. Most of them are dedicated as open space um, in the subdivision itself. Some are preserved, um, and protected by a conservation easement, some are not. Um, even though they were set aside as open space for the subdivision. Um, I, that, that doesn't guarantee that they'll always remain as open space. I mean, a, a plat amendment can be done that carves out some of this open space. Uh, if it gets approved by the town and, and the people that have interest in the plat, so it's possible. Uh, so what this basically does is says, you know, those extensive forests would remain period, would, 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 our policy would be to protect them and keep them in natural condition.
I have a question, Chris. I'm sorry. Go ahead, Lori.
Thank you, Cindy. Um, Chris, with regards to those open spaces, um, and I know we mentioned the residential planned community district. If we plat at a planned community that has already been built, how can they then make a new plat?
Uh, you can always, you can seek a plat amendment. You can come to the town and seek an amendment to a plat. Um, the zoning ordinance could change to allow increased density within a given zone, which may add considerable value to the property, which may encourage somebody who holds the rights to it to reconsider holding it as open space. Nothing is forever.
Any of that.
What?
Like, we won't be doing any of that. We won't be changing our code to allow for more density on areas that were dedicated for open space.
Let me ask you this, do you think it's an important goal to have in the comprehensive plan? To protect and preserve, keep these forests that have been set aside, keep them as forests?
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Okay. And that's, that's, that's the goal and that's what we're talking about now. I mean, and the suggestion here is that we do that. And one way that we do that is provide a, a layer of zoning protection, make it resource conservation, which makes it consistent with the way the town has handled these open areas over time. Um, it has applied resource conservation to lands that ought not be developed or, or it doesn't want to see it developed in any, to any extent. Um, so that, it just takes a step forward. And yeah, sure, hopefully the planning commission would never do that, but, but you don't know. At least this.
Yeah, I, I, I think that we could add a, a bullet then that says, um, retain all open space that has been plotted in planned communities as open space. And return them back to the HOA.
Well, okay, let's, let's put a note there because I think we essentially say that on some level and maybe I, I'm not, I can't remember exactly, but um, but yeah, that's a more directive way or specific recommendation that achieves this goal, so. Um, I'm all for that type of language, maybe it's slightly modified, but I hear what you're saying because that, that's clearly what, what would do that.
Um, right.
Uh, protect small town bayfront character and unique setting through regulations on new development and redevelopment. And this is just a basic goal that basically lays the foundation for the planning and building design recommendations that come up later in the plan that seek to do that. And it's been acknowledged in multiple meetings that the commission would like to see standards that made sure new buildings look like they fit into Chesapeake Beach. There was a basic design established and a comment was raised about this and this is, this means that rather than the planning commission simply writing standards that it thinks work, it would actually hire an architect to go through a public process where people could participate in establishing what it is, or the defining characteristics. And that does not translate into specific regulations on the color or the, even, even the look and the shape of the building. It's more about the various, the character of it. And it doesn't mean, is not, the intent is not to stifle innovation or architectural advancement. It's, it's meant to keep a unified character. And if I can give you an example, the architects on the school property went through that process in a very diligent way and I, I thought it was really nice the way they did that. And they met with me early on and they talked about how they might do that and that's the same type of thing we're talking about. Uh, and if you look at that building and think about it and then compare it to, or look at that proposed building and think about it and compare it to a number of other buildings recently built or that are historic, you can see the similarities. Um, there's a common language in the building architecture. And then the last one is uh, or number five, adapt to the vulnerabilities of sea level rise. Um, I, I, I don't know that we need to dwell on that because we are going to talk about those recommendations. Um, and provide increased public recreational access to the bay and Fishing Creek waterfront shorelines. I put that number six in after Larry sent out that revision back in December. Uh, he, well, not revision, but he proposed language that dealt with um, access to the, the Chesapeake Bay. And I, so I thought, why not just add that as a goal uh, up front and center, so it's very clear. Before I go off of this, any other broad goals that, that we haven't touched on that that you've always imagined would be in this new comprehensive plan?
Um, I think that um, a mention of adequate public facilities is warranted. I don't know if you need to be as strong as say pursue an adequate public facilities ordinance. Um.
What does adequate mean? And, and what kind of facilities? Um, it's, it's a broad term.
It is, but it, it's an ordinance that most towns that have, that are growing in our size have. And it, it protects the town from developing beyond their infrastructure. And, and basically, um, it requires that you put a program in place to develop in, infrastructure for things that you intend to permit. Um, and at the same token, it prevents developing before those things are put in place. So, um, depending on what we permit, we might really need an adequate public facilities ordinance. So, uh, maybe we can revisit that and everybody can read up on it.
So Lori, can I just ask you, does that mean that when a developer comes in and wants to put in a housing development that he's required to also put in a park that the community can use as well? Is that what you're talking about?
Yes, you could include anything you want in an adequate public facilities ordinance. You can include park space, you couldn't, you can talk about, um, I forget the term for the road capacity, but um, you can, you know, you can refer to, to numbers based on how much traffic goes through, you can refer to sewer capacity. Um, basically, you can put anything you want in an adequate public facilities ordinance. Um, it does get complicated if you're going to be permitting um, a lot because it, it requires you to also have a program to obtain the facilities that you're talking about. And um, some of them have uh, stipulations that say either the developer or the town, you know, either the developer has to wait for the town to develop these things, or the developer has to do it themselves. Um, you know, it, it's, it's another very complicated thing. Um, like a comprehensive plan, but it is something that a town our size should be engaging in at some point.
I would think unless the comprehensive plan says there is no need for adequate public facilities, that the town could pass an ordinance like Lori's talking about uh, that would be consistent with the comprehensive plan. Unless it forbade it, then it's going to be consistent. Yeah, you know, adequate facilities, I would think would always be consistent with any com- comprehensive plan unless it was forbidden in the comprehensive plan, which it isn't in the draft.
One of the goals in the uh, community facilities plan will be that, um, exactly what we, we're talking about. Not that the town adopted APFO, adequate public facilities ordinance, um, but we could do that. Um, but that it not exceed the capacity in available facilities and it worked, and it works diligently to make resolve deficiencies in things that we know, and principally that's parks. Um, so. Uh, let's, let's put a question mark or not a, an asterisk here and revisit this under that chapter because I think that's where it, it, it's most powerful. Community facilities.
I like that, Lori. Uh, another thing, Chris, that we haven't identified, but we really should talk about is senior housing. Um, we don't have any and I don't know where seniors go here to live, but I, I think that we've got to figure out how do we um, find areas or promote or encourage developers to come and put in senior housing somewhere? We really do need it, I would bet. Um. So I don't know where, where you put that, but I think that needs.
Talk about that under the residential part of this plan.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, while we're on objectives, can I just read quickly through the objectives from the two thousand ten plan and see if anybody wants any of those adopted?
Before you do, it is, uh, it's now nine o'clock and I promised that I would make a motion to adjourn at nine o'clock. Is there a second? If there's no second, we'll continue and someone else can decide when we want to adjourn. There is no second. Go ahead, Commissioner Blackwell.
Okay, if we, if we're trying to wrap up the objectives right now, I'd just like to read through these and see if anybody thinks that we should continue to pursue the, some of the ones from the two thousand ten plan.
Are you making a motion?
No, I'm just asking you if you want me to take the time to do that now.
Great idea.
Okay. Um, so there's only a few bullets, um, and I'll just read, read them all. Um, one says, a land use development pattern that has built underlying network of roads, streets and environmental corridor corridors and promotes connectivity among neighborhood centers and land uses. I'm just going to read through them. Uh, the second one, the roots and tide scenic byway resources are leveraged to make roads safer for pedestrians and cyclists as well as cars, trucks, farm machinery, and seeks funding for technical assistance to property owners and marketing the byway as a visitor experience. Next bullet, the town center becomes a vibrant marina and activity center where land is developed and redeveloped in a compatible mixed-use pattern, a combination of water-dependent, water-related and non-water-related uses would reflect the role that this area has an important activity center of Ches- for Chesapeake Beach. It also reflects the town's interest in year-round economic development. Next bullet, gradually, the built environment along Maryland two sixty one through town is intensified as new buildings are built on underutilized parcels and are situated closer to the street and closer to each other. Okay, next one, a commercial base that is balanced to the needs of those living in and around Chesapeake Beach and supports tourism. Next one, long-term transportation access and circulation throughout Chesapeake Beach is protected. Next one, pedestrian and bicycle safety is increased with a priority given to local pedestrian movements to the center of town even at the cost of slowing vehicle traffic speeds and increasing traffic, travel times along Maryland two sixty one. Um, and those, those are some that there's, those are some of the general policies. There's a lot, I think everybody should really read a lot of the policies from the old comprehensive plan because um, it was, it was really good plan. So just, just um, something to think about. The ones that stood out to me were um, obviously the ones about road circulation and protecting our long-term road circulation. Um, and then um, a commercial base that is balanced to the needs of those living in and around Chesapeake Beach and supports tourism, but I think we have one like that. And um, you know, my favorite one is about making the marina center a vibrant uh, activity center. So just FYI, those are some of the oldest objectives that we were trying to pursue.
I like them and um, I wrote them actually. I'm very familiar with them back in two thousand two. And um, and I think there's continuity between them and the current uh, plan, although the, the goals are somewhat different, of course, and we, we have sea level rise issue now. But um, uh, three or four of those that you mentioned would be right into the transportation section. And that's, they're seamless because really things haven't changed uh, in that regard with respect to travel and the, the, the basic goals the town has for travel. So um, I think you're going to see those come back, Lori. Pretty much like they're written because I, I think they're pretty good.
Okay.
They really, and we did do a lot of massaging of them with the planning commission back then, um, to get them in that form.
But Chris, can I just add one more thing? I, I really think that one of the things that you have in the two thousand ten that we really don't have in here is to enhance the um, and expand the recreational amenities. Um, I really think we need to draw attention to the idea that in two thousand and ten you had a goal of like, you know, things for the kids, you know, a skate park and, um, you know, uh, there's nothing about dog park, but you could include the dog park. But the, the point is, we've got that whole area in there that may be more usable for more active recreational amenities like that. And that still is a way that the community can come together. They can go down and have a cup of coffee at Trader's and, and, you know, and, and go around and walk around and go to the dog park, whatever, but the point is, that still is a recreational amenity. And I think a, an objective of having that as, you know, one of them would make us focus on that as a, you know, a development option. We, you know, parks are important, but we really need to look at bigger projects besides Callum's field redevelopment. But possibly reconsider that skate park idea or something for, you know, when we had our little meeting a couple of years ago, you know, parents were saying, there's nothing for our teenage kids to do. You know, there, there's no fishing, there's no, there's nothing they can do and they wander around. And then I was noticing we had a, you know, we have a committee on drug abuse. Well, we've got to get people more active all year round, get them active. And just having more commercial isn't going to get them necessarily in a positive, active way. And I just want to make sure that when we put in commercial, we also re, you know, redevelop that area into some very active areas for our kids as well.
Everybody okay with that? If there's no objection, I can add that as a, you know, number seven as a, a, a goal. Because clearly this plan is, addresses that, provides opportunities for that. And we haven't even talked about the park recommendations yet. But having it as a goal would make sense. It would kind of embrace, it provides a basis for making all those recommendations.
Right, exactly. It's going to be in there, I think.
Jonathan, you okay with it?
Yeah, I definitely agree that we uh, we could use some more um, park space. I, I was definitely open to the dog park idea. Uh, I think we should try to pursue that at some point.
Well, good, you're, you're, you have young, you're still the young person with young kids, so it's uh, it's good to have you on the planning commission with that perspective.
Yeah, it's nice that we're uh, upgrading that little tot lot soon.
Yeah, yeah. Thank the mayor for that, absolutely.
Let's hope it doesn't flood. Florida flooded all the time.
Um, so let's uh, let me turn you to, your attention to the PowerPoint then. And uh, while going through the slides, I'll, I'll kind of present the broad brush things uh, and then get into some specifics. Um, first, there is a section that's discusses the general framework or organizing approach. Um, and not to make this too abstract, but I wanted just to show that there is a lot of uh, land in town that's essentially developed already and that's all shown in that beige. Um, and then there's a lot of land in town that is in forests, you know, like. And then there's a lot of land in town that is in forests, you know, like these areas here. And, and then this big area here is all wetlands and marsh. So it's a real balance between those two things. And then layered on top of that, we have a gateway focal point. We've called it local serving retail and talking about, you know, an attractive, safe place for pedestrians to cross the street or walk along. Then the town center, which would be both the civic center, because that's where the town hall is, and commercial and recreational uses. And I'll address how that overlays with the zoning or with the sea level rise and flooding issues in a moment. Then the maritime district, it is what it is. It's, it's the, the tourism hub of the town. And it's obviously overlapped with the town center area, of course. No one would say that Gary Luckett's restaurant is not part of the maritime center. I mean, it is, clearly is. Then the hilltop commercial focal point, there are a number of commercial properties here and they come in and out of use. And so this was a, a goal to identify that as a, as a center of focus too. So that was kind of the, how commercial would be arranged in centers on top of the town as it is now. And then this map is the, the land use plan. And the way this works is that this map is meant to convey the desired or recommended use of land throughout the entire town. So every property shows up as some color on this map. And to address a point that Lori made, she said, you know, you've got these four categories, they don't match up consistently with the zones that we have now in our, on our zoning map, except for high density. And we'd better do show those as the actual zones rather than these sort of policy loose ideas like resource preserve. And I won't explain my rationale for that now, but, but I'm all for that and we can certainly do that. It's, it's not an issue at all and actually may help people understand better what we're recommending. So in response to the chairman's question about why Mama Lucia's is not shown as red, as commercial in this area. And it's in part because the property is zoned for residential village. It's a non-conforming use. It's allowed to continue, but if it ever shuts down, it stops operation for a year, it loses its non-conforming status and would have to revert to residential. And that's zoned residential based on the strong input of residents in this area that have been expressed frequently over the years. I've opted just to keep that consistent and not to reintroduce that as a new idea. In other words, not to suggest that we're recommending it be res, uh, commercial. And, and the reason why I show it as residential is because there should be continuity between the zoning ord, zoning map and the land use map. And the way the zoning map is drafted now, the town's objective is that this, that property will one day in fact become residential. Now, if, if you would like to take a different approach to that and change the direction of the town, now's the time to do it. We would show it as residential and then seek a zoning change to make it commercial. I think you'll get a lot of feedback from the, the residents in the neighborhood. But you know, the restaurant's there and it's, you know, so there's a rationale for saying now's the time to make the change. But, but that's the reason, Larry, that I, I showed it as residential village.
Chris, what is the difference between the village and then the medium density up on the hill where I live? What is the difference between those two different terms?
The residential village allows for smaller lot sizes. And if you, and it allows for a higher intensity of development. And it allows for a greater mixing of uses. So you could open up an architect's studio in the residential village, for instance. Not retail so much, but you could open up cert, a doctor's office. You could operate a doctor's office out of your house, sort of the old fashioned home occupation type of thing.
So it is somewhat commercial. It is so much commercial over there then, because somebody did tell me that they were zoned somewhat commercial. I mean, they could basically go retailer somewhat minor commercial.
Well, they, they certainly can in certain areas because like, for instance, up here on 261 north, by North Beach, that is actually now all zoned for commercial. So there's a real estate agency up there. But by and large through here, there's been very little use of the flexibility that allows for non-residential uses. People just haven't taken advantage of it. I remember working with one architect and he wanted to buy this building and convert it into a, his architectural studio. But he lives outside of town, he just wanted a commercial office. And the zoning doesn't allow that. But if he lived on the property, it would allow him to do it. Like it would be like a live-work type of arrangement. So that persuaded him not to buy the property. Again, I mean, that's, talks about how we get interest from people who are looking to open businesses and find they, they have some obstacles.
So there, so there are more short-term rentals there maybe, that's where the short-term rentals are, I guess, huh? I don't know.
I don't know. But anyway, those types of uses and mixing of uses is not, is not allowed in the medium density district. That's truly residential.
I see.
And in the residential village, as you know, which is up here, right now, you could do a townhouse development. Just like that proposal that was discussed at the town council meeting for this property up here. If you see it by Cox Road, that is currently zoned residential village. And a, that townhouse project is designed to, is the townhouse, no, multi-family project. It's a multi-family. Is that designed to meet the standards as they exist now in the residential village. And so is that the project, Stinnet's Place, on the old Stinnet's Restaurant grounds. That project is allowed. Those, neither of those projects would be permitted anywhere else in any other residential zone.
Okay, thank you.
So we would, we would finding the resident, village, that we would redefine the intensity of the residential village.
That's, that's why, I mean, that's some of the gray areas that I've highlighted in the draft. But I, I, I thought that it was fairly clear that you wanted to, the commission wanted to eliminate townhouses and multi-family houses from the residential village zone. We should revisit that since it's on the table. And when we go through that list that I hope to go through, we should just check in with you on that still. Obviously, that's a very important determination that needs to be made sooner the better. But what, what we would actually do is change the text of the zoning ordinance, right, to eliminate the housing types that the planning commission would not want to see happen in that zone. That's what you would effectively do. I mean, there are other approaches to eliminate that type of housing, but that would be the, kind of the cleanest way of handling it.
There are townhomes in there now, Chris, aren't there? There are multi-family facilities and or housing in there, I know that.
Yes, and that's why I thought it was a reasonable thing to continue to allow it. There is a townhouse community right here, really nice kind of niche townhouse community. Actually, it's right here, actually, you can see the small lots there.
Cox Road, yeah.
But that would not be allowed under the current. Another project like that would no longer be allowed if, if the town chose to change, change the zoning ordinance.
So if you change the zoning ordinance though, going back to what Lori was saying about adopting or adapting some kind of an ordinance that would require somebody who's going to put in a, let's say, three or four townhomes. They raise about two or three lots and put in two or three town, would they be, could you require them to put in a little tot lot or a park area so that, you know, because you're going to intensify the area, the neighborhood, you're going to bring more kids in. Could you, could you do that then, a, a, adopt some kind of a policy where they would be required to put in more amenities?
Yeah, absolutely. In fact, that is standard approach. You have to establish what the standard is and then when a, a subdivider submits a project, they would deliver the acreage that's necessary. Now, for a small project, as you described, the open space requirement would be really small. It would be unreasonable to ask a developer to provide a park just for three or four. But you could have a fee in lieu of providing the park and the fee would go into the town's strategy to acquire land or to improve existing parks or build a bike path. It's a very common approach and one that I think is really fantastic. And if for bigger projects, so if you had, say, thirty units or forty units, you could really begin to generate the possibility for funds that could be devoted to recreational uses. Or the size of the development could be made smaller and the open space could be provided on the site. The only issue there is that it's, that it's, doesn't contribute to a public park plan. You know, it contributes only to meeting the needs of those individuals and it's privatized.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. So anyway, the red indicates commercial, green, basically preservation. Development would still be allowed and resource conservation, you know, assuming it's not underwater or on its, you know, in a wetland or anything. But for instance, in this area, you could still build at one house at five acres, one density. So if you can consolidate acres that is developable, you could put scattered housing in this area. And remember, we showed areas up here along Cox Road as being changed from residential village to resource conservation, which basically reduces the ability for building houses. It would mean that there might be one or two houses, maybe three or four, rather than, you know, multi-family project or townhouse development up on that hillside there. And the same thing applies here, this large parcel. You can see this is Bay, Bayview Hills subdivision and this is a road connection that was approved. Sort of a paper street. And the idea was at one point that could come into this property. This is very steep and it's wooded and as the plan's drafted now, that area could be developed, but of, of much lower density and it would have to be mostly land preservation. About a third of this is, is undevelopable anyway, because it's marsh land and steep, steep slopes. So that my, I guess my way, my reason for saying this is that this plan is relevant. Because based on this plan is that, that we will use the zone, we will use this plan to draw the boundaries of the zoning map. In order to implement this plan, we adopt a zoning ordinance that reflects it. Okay, so these parcels that are green, today they're yellow. But with the new plan, they're going to be green and the, you've removed a lot of the development potential from those locations. Here's the existing zoning map. I, I guess I should have brought this up Cindy while we were talking about it. The orange is the medium density, right? And the beige or the yellow, dark yellow is, is all residential village. There's medium density up here on C Street north of town too. Question?
Yes, um, so it also in the 2010 comprehensive plan, they had that parcel south of Brownie's Beach identified as permanently preserving and not building on at all. And I think we need to retain that language as well.
Okay, I'll go back and find that language. I mean, I know that the commission wants that, that, the, the, that is a, for now, an aspirational type of goal because it is privately owned and we can't extinguish the development potential. I mean, you can't just say you can't do anything with the property. But that was a goal that we sought to achieve and at the time, and several times since then, the town and the state discussed the possibility, and, and the owner discussed the possibility of using state funds to acquire any remaining development rights and then dedicate it to public purpose. But it never went beyond kind of preliminary discussions. So that, but you know, that, those discussions come out of that planning process. But it just never was implemented.
Well, I, I don't want to be the commission that loses our last parcel of basefront property. So the strongest amount of protection for that land is what we need to write.
Everybody okay with that? Would you like me to draft something to that effect? Yeah, thumbs up?
I thought we were talking about annexing that and making that passive park area. Were, weren't we talking about that at one time?
Well, no, that's in the town already. The town boundary is way down here. But I thought there was discussion about annexing land south of the town for some type of, maybe. But no, this all is in the town already.
Okay. Okay, yeah, I go along with it.
The part we had talked about purchasing was protected because of the beetle, as I recall.
That's right, that's right.
Okay, that's it. And, and there's a, a plant that is also
Right.
native and rare located there too. Okay, so I wanted to talk a little bit about the sea level rise. And not, not to get into much detail, but again, just to refresh everyone's mind about it. Because it was obvious based on the earlier questions we had that I, I need to do this. This is, we have a, a potential for two foot, two point one foot sea level rise. That's the consensus coming out of Maryland Climate Condition, Commission and the scientists at University of Maryland. They published a report. I referenced that report in the town council meeting and I can't recall the name of it right now, but it's actually on our Dropbox, I put it there a year ago or so. The, these, this area, th, this map shows areas that would be open water with a two point one sea level rise in thirty, twenty-nine years roughly. You know, things continue going at the same rate they are. And you can see that a lot of this area is not underwater now, right? It's, and it's not going to be underwater simply with a two point one sea level rise. But the state says it's not enough just to look at where the water would be when the bay's level is higher. What you have to do is look at the implication of flooding when you have a higher tidal level. When the mean high tide is higher, the flooding is much more extensive. And it brings a lot more people into vulnerability zones. So here, for instance, the same map, or same geography essentially, you see a lot more blue on the map indicating more areas impacted by water. Again, the dark blue is, you know, water that, open waters. That's where we're headed, this would be all open water, this marsh will be open water. And then the, what we see now is all of the parking lot at the fire, North Beach Fire Department, and part of the parking area here at the commercial center and Maryland 261. And these streets where someone just said there were three or four inches of water several days after a rainstorm. You can see this, this is kind of, it's a little illustrative of what scientists are, are saying. What, what these areas, these blues, this blue shade indicates is that each of these areas will have a ten percent chance of flooding every year. A one in ten probability of flooding. And by, for context, the typical flood plain, we talked about the one hundred year flood plain that we're all familiar with, the probability is one percent, one in one hundred. And there is a whole set of zoning and planning standards and flood plain regulations and protective requirements and design structural engineering that covers those areas. And we're talking here about areas that will have ten times the risk. And so that's why I think it's very important that we deal with these areas thoughtfully moving forward. Because to ignore this would be to put our head in the sand. I mean, some people would prefer that we do, but I, I hope that we can work towards a basic community consensus about how to address this issue over the long term and certainly lay. and certainly lay the foundation for that cooperative decision-making in the plan itself. So how about, remember, we had different zones. This comes out, Jonathan and Jeff, you weren't here, but we talked about different zones and this is zone two. This is the center of the town. Open water with a 2.1 sea level rise. You can see the wetlands that exist today will be open water. Much of the former railroad bed for the railway trail or railroad will be underwater. Much of the parking lot down here associated with Adner's Marina will be underwater. And the area coming right up to the area that was proposed as Harbor Vista West would be underwater. Of course, this assumes no one's raising the land, right? Or building huge bulkheads, but you can't simply build a bulkhead to prevent things here because water gets around the bulkhead. You have to seal everything off. But anyway, then we look at this map. Again, the same geography, but we've done as the state suggested and layered the implication of storm surge, the flooding associated with the normal storms that we have. And now, everything that's blue here is in that 10% per year flood risk. And we're not just talking about, you know, some water splashing over the ground. Item point D there says, in that, in the event we have that flood, the water's there at that location will be 1.2 feet deep. Now, if we have the 100-year flood, this is basically the one-decade flood. If we have the 100-year flood, the water would be 3.8 feet deep. I mean, we're talking about catastrophic issues now if we have the 100-year flood event. Now, if we have the 500-year event, it'd be 5.7 feet deep. We had a 500-year event in our lifetime, at least one, and that's Isabel. If something equivalent to that happens, we're talking about a lot of water moving through this area at high speeds and we can't ignore that. Now, the question came up about the town center. Why would we introduce a town center given these parameters? Well, what you see up here, everything that's this light shade of blue, this is the 100-year flood area. It's not as close to the water and it's at a slightly higher elevation. As you move north, this elevation increases. So this is where the town center idea is being contemplated. When we first heard people talk about the town center, I thought, wow, that'd be great. You know, we had this bigger circle with a lot more activity and all that. Well, we resized it and made it much more associated with the town hall and this sort of parking lot area. And who knows, maybe the owner of this restaurant would like to participate and build something more as a gateway into it. So this area is basically a flood zone, just like the town hall is a flood zone now. So it does have a risk, but its risk is not on par with anything in the bluer areas that we see on the map. And so this plan, if it goes forward with a town center idea, it says basically, we believe that the value in creating a town center, for all the reasons we want to create a town center, is worth the risk of allowing it to happen in what will become a flood zone in 30 years. And assuming we don't do anything. And so, what would we do? And so this is the illustration of that. Remember, this is not meant to say what's going to happen. It was just what could happen. What's the scale and the size that we were looking for? Where are the parameters? Remember, we talked about all this area around Callum Field being used as part of a flood attenuation system where the land would be raised, the berms would be created and environmental principles would be used to capture and hold floodwaters to protect this area, protect these restaurants and protect this new town center. And that this new town center and Callum's Field reimagined would work together under a different vision of things. And remember, we talked about this type of thing where these are sort of the images of what could happen at Callum's Field. For, in this image on the right shows a big, you know, existing ball field, football field size. But around the sides, it shows elevation lines indicate the land has been raised to protect it and to convey water in the direction we want it to go in. And you see this land has been raised. And here's an example of where the water views are protected and the access to the views are protected. And Callum's Field is tied into the water in a really neat way. And other concepts we talked about here on the left-hand side too. So what is the future of Callum's Field? It's a future that helps protect the town from flooding without the necessity of building seawalls around the entire Fish and Creek area, which is practically impossible. So that's why we're recommending that a master plan be done to figure these issues out to see if in fact we could accommodate this, this vision. And by the way, yeah.
I don't think anybody, so I love the general concept of that. But I don't think anybody agreed to a roundabout or buildings. And so those really need to come out.
Lori, this is, we can take it out, we can take everything out of it. We can just say town center. But sometimes there's value in putting an image together that kind of conveys a spirit of things. And now, we could just use these. Remember, we showed different possibilities for building intensity and what we're really looking for. And this was sort of the town center idea with a few buildings connected together with sidewalks that would allow storefronts, maybe some apartments above. I know there's concern about that still, but something that created a sense of place and gathering point here in the center. You might remember that this is a sketch drawing that hasn't gone to the final design. And I've been holding back just in anticipation that this issue may come up. So if you want to eliminate it, fine, it was...
Let me point out, Chris, unless the commission as a group says to eliminate it, it's in the plan right now. So if somebody wants to propose eliminating it and ask the commission to agree, then we can go forward with that. But we aren't going to be individually pulling and pushing things in and out of the plan.
Well, that's why we're here then. Should we keep an image like this, or this image maybe practically speaking, and what it conveys? And the important thing is, it does show development, it shows buildings, it shows an accessway, it shows it tucked up away from the area that's most vulnerable and it shows, maybe not as clear as it could, but it shows sort of an attempt to manage floodwaters and flood risks in a naturalized way. So there's a lot packaged into this, but if we don't want it, let me know.
So I am going to make a motion to remove it because it's so specific and it specifically calls out a roundabout and it specifically has buildings drawn on somebody's property and it also eliminates a lot of parking. I love the concept of the attenuation of the floodwaters and using the parks. I think that it's very appropriate to put that language in and to say, you know, we want to master plan this area, but I don't think it's decided and I don't think that we should specifically put things that aren't decided in the comprehensive plan.
Okay, we have a motion to remove that drawing from chapter five. Do we have a second?
I second.
Okay, let's go around the room. Commissioner Greengold, oh, discussion, any more discussion?
Well, Mr. Chairman, the reason why, I mean, I obviously think it's a great place to have water mitigation. I think there's going to be some design in there that's going to do that. But we know, Chris, and we've talked about this many times, that all of the building that's going to go in there is going to be at least three stories, four stories of multi-use, you know, of multi-use structures.
You said two and a half stories would be the max.
I say two and a half stories, but once you put a berm up there, you're going to then elevate it way above the street level to make it more like a 50-foot tall structure if you're looking at it from 261. So, you know, I've seen this in New Jersey. I was just up there last week and I just saw how they use berms to elevate the structure. So even though it's 35-foot tall, it's going to end up being 50 feet from where the line of sight is from the road. So that's why I'm opposed to it because right now it looks all nice and small and, you know, it fits in there nicely, but it won't be that way when we get it put in there and you'll see all these very large buildings. And again, we're going to have a lot of residences down there where indeed it's going to be flooded half the time. So for a town to take that kind of responsibility on by permitting that seems a little bit irresponsible, in my view. That's...
You have any more comments you want to make?
No, I just want to propose that we remove the specific...
That's on cable. We have a motion and a second. Commissioner Evans, any comments?
I can see what they're saying, but we did want to have a vibrant town center and I think that accomplishes that. And we could take, I mean, each development project is going to require our approval anyway. So I think I'm okay with keeping it the way it is.
Commissioner Brolk?
I believe it should be removed.
Okay, Commissioner Larson? What would you put in its place?
That's not the discussion.
I think that the general goals of making that a recreation center are valid and that's enough for a comprehensive plan. But to say in the comprehensive plan, we're going to have a roundabout, it's going to serve this particular function, it's going to have these buildings. It's too specific. We haven't done that.
The question is, what will you put in its place?
A recreation area that attenuate floodwaters.
All right, so that's what Commissioner Blackwelder wants to put in its place. But anyway, we have the motion on the floor to remove it. Start out with Commissioner Blackwelder. Remove or keep?
She made the motion.
All right, Commissioner Greengold?
I agree, remove.
Okay, Commissioner Brolk?
Remove.
Okay, Commissioner Evans?
Keep.
Commissioner Larson?
Keep.
All right, the vote is three to two, the motion fails or passes, so the drawing is removed. And so let's proceed, Mr. Jakubiec.
What do you think about it, Mr. Chairman?
I think it's irrelevant, frankly. I mean, it's a drawing, it's a concept, it makes little difference. But we have a three to two in the commission and I'm not going to vote. So we'll let Commissioner Blackwelder's motion ride.
Okay, now, everybody, just Commissioner Blackwell's motion was a little bit more than just having the image. She referred to this repeatedly as recreational center, which is significantly different than town center as we've imagined it.
Well, she hasn't made a motion to put anything in its place and if she does, she can.
I'm not interested in the motion right now. What I need to hear is what the commissioners want to do. Would they prefer to see, just give me some discussion. Those members who, you know, Lori, you're saying a recreational center. How about the other members who wanted to keep this in? Are you okay with a recreational center? I'm not suggesting we draw something else up, but changing this to recreational center rather than a center where buildings would be built. I guess that's primarily the issue.
Now, I, okay, I would like to see us put in more recreational amenities. Again, we could go anywhere from a skate park to a dog park to, we could use another field because right now that picture only shows us the one field, which right now is a soccer/football field with a little tiny baseball diamond on the side of it. But you can only use it really for one or the other. You could really develop that into maybe two different fields with, again, more things for the kids to use. And you can also put in little walkways that meet up with all the walkable, you know, all the new pathways and put little kiosks or, you know, little hot dog stands or little something rather, with a little table sitting around. We don't, you know, we can have a meeting place. You're going to still put a fountain in, but we don't have to have all the extra retail that we may or may not need. You know, Mayor Pat last week said that we were doing quite well financially as a town. It's not like we need a whole bunch of commercial revenue. I'm sure the hotel is going to be doing great in about a year. So I'm not sure that we want to intensify that area that's going to be flooded out in about 30 years. And if not flooded out, it's going to have a lot of drainage issues. In fact, our engineers last week talked about how it's already mushy in a lot of those areas and it was like a water bed. You put a book on one end and, you know, the water bed goes up on the other end. So we've already got all kinds of water issues in that whole area. So to put in, you know, three-story foot, you know, three-story high buildings seems, again, like we are going in the wrong direction here. We should just keep it low intensity or active use. And that's what I would say, just keep it like that. Make it a community center and keep it all outdoor activity.
Well, and I think the residential village butts up against that area. So all those areas that permit business but then makes you live in the business, all those could eventually and gradually become a town center based on that development of that area as recreation. And that's also one of the recommendations that happened in the 2010 plan was to remove the choir. Well, it might not have been a recommendation, but it was an observation that the requirement to have people live there was preventing those houses from becoming commercial. And I think, I think you have to put in the recreation and you just have to, we already have the ability for areas around it to flip into a commercial amenity. And to, I think that we need to take the first steps first and not, you know, intensify prematurely.
Okay, do the gentlemen have any comments on this, just to move it along?
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to see some kind of a compromise where we have some open space over there, maybe a dog park or something, expand Callum's Field, but also have what the people want, which is a coffee shop, bike shop, something where the roundabout is. We're running out of room to put commercial things like that, so. But, yeah, I think maybe to the left of the roundabout, I could see that being more open space, park space and then where the roundabout is, maybe keep that commercial, coffee shop, bike shop.
So we'd be essentially kind of downplaying the town center concept a little bit, making it much more of a recreational, open space amenity. But if the town wanted to support the development of a business or the development of a building that would house some kind of accessory uses to that, that made it beneficial. So if you were coming to watch your kid play a football game or soccer game, you could sit outside with a cup of coffee at their cafe that's there.
Yeah, exactly, kind of like a central apartment.
I get that. Jeff, are you okay with that?
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Okay. And Mr. Chairman, what do you think?
Uh, I think we're, uh, we've made a major change in direction here. And we can implement that, and then the next time we get together, someone will change it again. I mean, I, I think it's relatively small potatoes.
Okay, very good. Well, um, let's keep going then. Very good. This is a good feedback to me. Oh, that was just, I was gonna explain storm surge, but I'm not gonna do it now. Okay, so we talked about these three levels, remember, or layers, I call them. Layer one with, oops. Layer one would be the areas projected to be open water, you know, the highest risk areas. Uh, and the plan as it's drafted now says that those areas would be rezoned to resource conservation, that they're not well-suited to development any longer, and we're going to, um, prepare for the future by not allowing development there. We're not gonna extend water, sewer, street access, or anything to serve those types of development. We wanna move population and buildings out of those zones. And they include, um, well, they obviously include this area, but, you know, this is mostly, this is marshland and develop, um, water anyway, so it's somewhat irrelevant. It, but within the town center or the marina area, that includes, um, from the, the building here, that this is an apartment building, um, the land around it, the parking is projected to be underwater, so anything from that point south would then become resource conservation rather than maritime zone. So, um, the uses that happen here that are, are related to aquaculture, fishing, boating, you know, marina-type of activities could, could continue unabated. Um, but in terms of constructing buildings in that zone, uh, they would not be allowed. Under certain, some conditions, perhaps some buildings could be built up on stilts and things like that, but the, the focus is to, focus is environmental protection, that's the primary objective. And then the same thing applies to, uh, this area here, uh, which is, you know, underwater too. I don't think there's any proposal to actually develop this, this area right now, but this area that is shown as, um, in, in harm's way with the flood zones, yes. So this area would be treated like a resource conservation zone as well. So those are two changes that would be zoning amendments that would come out of the recommended plan. The others, the other layer is areas projected to be at one in ten chance of flooding each year. And so that would be, for instance, this area, part of this area, um, which is undeveloped now, of course, it would be the parking lot, um, of the fire department and moving into this area, it would be the, um, Gordon Stenit Road, we've got, of course, a commercial or municipal lot here, a town-owned park, park property here, and privately-owned property here. We have a mix of public and private interests along this road, uh, here. So in this vicinity, we have, we call it layer two. And so what does that mean? The, the way the plan's drafted is it means that the development could, could take place in that area, but it has to be in coordination with the town's interests in flood protection. So as, what that means in practicality is that, um, the developer would have to conduct a flood impact study addressing how the site plan and building design would, um, mitigate expected impacts of sea level rise. There'd be a demonstration that the project would not worsen impacts to properties and infrastructure. You'd demonstrate that the property or the project will contribute to the strategy adopted by the town to address resiliency. For instance, uh, do we want to attenuate the flooding? In other words, uh, allow it to come in and, and, and to a certain area and, and slowly work its way out, you know, or do we wanna hold back water with structures or raised lands? Or do we wanna provide for adjoining areas to receive the water, kind of what we're talking about at Kellam's Field? Then the fourth one, all stormwater management would have to be designed to be resilient in the face of sea level rise. So it's not enough to design for today's conditions. We'd have to design for sea level rise conditions, long-term conditions. And lastly, coordinate and participate in the placement, design, construction, reconstruction of infrastructure to serve the project. That might mean that roads have to be elevated, or water and sewer lines have to be rerouted. And all the variety of public interest concerns would have to be addressed before the town would, consider approving a development project within those zones. And then there's, and I will get back to discussion, but then there's a layer, layer three.
Chris, on this one, the slide you have up, the last bullet, coordinate, participate in the placement, design, reconstruction, protection. That doesn't mean, that, that means the town still has to pay for and build it. It's just the, uh, so the developer has to coordinate and participate, whatever that means.
Yeah, I would be more inclined to think that participate means building the infrastructure that the town requires so that future residents and are protected in the area. For instance, I don't think the town would build, uh, raised Stenit Avenue to support a developer's project.
Neither do I, and that's, but it, it's, I think that should be clearer that the, uh, the proposing contractor has got to, um, ensure that the, uh, infrastructure that serves the project is adequate or, or builds it to make it adequate.
Right, that, that's, that's good wording. I like that. What I was gonna say is that the, that layer three are those areas that are developed already. And that are gonna, that face the same complications or face worse complications because they're developed already, right? Some of those areas will be redeveloped over time. We don't know when or how, but they will be redeveloped. And at such time that they would be redeveloped, the same type of standards would come into play. In other words, if you needed to redevelop a townhouse complex, um, it would be redeveloped, provided conditions like this were met, guidance like this was, was achieved. Now, there, there are other ways of phrasing this or addressing this, but the principle here is to say that within higher-risk areas, development would still be allowed, land use would still be able to be, um, built, but only if the, the developer, uh, responded to the town's concerns with sea level rise and flooding and infrastructure. Now, do we have all this, these details worked out right now? No, we don't have these designed. We have, we're, we're, we've just got a, um, a study that's funded that will begin doing sea level rise vulnerability assessments and planning, uh, in the next fiscal year from the state. So we're moving quickly to figure these things out, but we don't know precisely right now how to answer these, these questions. But once we get this plan done, we need to move quickly to figure these out. And these are, you know, certainly technical issues that require engineering review, but as a matter of policy, the question be, before you tonight that I like to ask is, is this a reasonable approach? Three layers and layer one off limits, layer two? Okay, provided basic issues are addressed. Layer three, redevelopment, okay, it's a fine, but you gotta go back and deal with these issues now.
Well, my, my concern, uh, that I expressed at the beginning, there is the one confusion I see between layer two and layer three that needs to be explained. It's a small point, but, uh, I, I just don't see how the Planning and Zoning Commission can approve projects in areas that we believe are gonna flood until we have the master flood plan and know what is necessary to mitigate that flooding.
Right. So y, y, and you followed that up by saying that it would be more advantageous to the town to hold off on approving any development within these at-risk areas until we actually had the study done.
Uh, it, it's incumbent, I would say it's incumbent upon the town to get this master flood plan done as quickly as possible so we know what we're doing. Cause, uh, it's, I mean, it, it, it's an, it's an unknown. It's not, uh, clearly defined what, what we're approving or, uh, suggesting is unfair to the developers to, uh, to have them submit plans that, uh, this master flood plan may come back and say, oh, well, you need all this infrastructure and you need all this barriers and berms and things, and, uh, they've spent a lot of money on planning when, um, there's, when the game is changed in the middle of it, so.
Got it.
Yes, I, I agree, and, and I just think people need to start thinking about lower-intensity projects in general, but that's, that's just a comment. I agree with, with Chairman Brown about we need a clear definition of, of what needs to go on in that area, so we're not stuck paying for things. And developers aren't confused about what they can and can't do.
If, um, if we revise the draft to address the good points, then we would basically link development approval to the master plan, flood resiliency plan. And we could actually keep these types of comments in here saying essentially that the, the flood resiliency plan should, be, should result in providing the, the information that would allow these types of regulatory approaches to be effective. You know what I mean?
So.
Whereas this, the study should answer something, should provide something that is actionable.
So what I think, maybe we need to do some research and find out what kind of language goes in to stuff like this that, that defines two p's for what? Because we can't be forced to put our, our infrastructure on any particular timeline. I mean, they, this study could come back and say, we have to do stuff that costs multiple millions of dollars, and we can't be made to, to rush that when, when really we could just build a park in that area and it would be fine for a hundred years. So I, I think we need to think a little bit more about that, and we need to think about what the builder's share would be in developing that area, and everybody needs to think about lower-intensity projects.
Yeah, I think the lower-intensity projects are part of the discussion that we haven't gotten to yet. I mean, um, this is just development without qualification, but I know that we wanna talk about those gray areas, um, and that's, you know, what are we talking about in terms of allowing development? And, and the types of residential development there. But I see what you're saying, and I, I don't think we wanna leave huge question marks like that open. Um, and this, the study should address how it is that these things can be financed, and the town will make a judgment when it decides to approve or disapprove the, the study, if it wants to go in the direction to, pay for things and, and what, and if so, how, and how to phase these types of projects, infrastructure projects. Okay. Is anybody okay with this?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I like, I like, um, I like these ideas, um, but I was gonna make a motion that we adjourn the meeting. I'm getting, I have to work tomorrow morning and I'm getting tired. Is there any way we can, uh, adjourn the meeting at this point? Are we at a breaking point?
Oh, um, from my perspective, we can take a break. Uh, we're at a place that is breakable.
I think, uh, I think it's, it would be unfair to all the people that have been waiting and watching, thinking there might be a public comment at the end. I think we need to allow them, uh, if there is anyone, the opportunity to, uh, to say something, to comment on what they've seen. So, um, uh, let's, if, if there is a second to adjourning the meeting, then, uh, then I, the discussion, I would like to make it open to the public so we can, uh, hear their comments before we close up tonight. Is there a second to adjourn? Okay, hearing a second, then, uh, we move on. Chris, back to you.
Oh, Larry, I'm seconded.
Alright. Commissioner Blackwelder has seconded, so let's, uh, let's go to the, the public, uh, cuz they're staying up late too, and give them a chance. Uh, so let me start, I guess, from left to right on my screen is, uh, Mr. Carpenter, I believe it is.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have two very brief comments. One, with regard to the skate park that was talked about. That was something that, uh, when I was on the council in two thousand and ten and we were considering the plan, the comprehensive plan and discussing the skate park, there was little if any interest in a skate park from the children of the town. We had several meetings and at each meeting, we had fewer and fewer young people join us. Those of us that are beyond our skateboard years decided that there was not support among the young people for the skateboard park, so we dropped the idea. My other comment is, um, you've, you've discussed removing the picture of the town center, or you're also going to remove all the verbiage associated with that town center. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Carpenter. Miss, Mr. Donovan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I just wanted to say that on Gordon Stenit Avenue, there's already residential, back on Gordon Stenit Avenue, so the discussion to me was absolutely mind-blowing that the developer would have to pay to raise a street that already has houses on it. That's just mind-blowing to me. My other comment was, if where Harbor Vista West was proposed to be built, which was also raised up six feet, so we would be, uh, you know, not have to deal with the flooding or sea level rise. Sea level rise is real, no one is denying that. At, at least I hope no one is. So if that gets changed to resource conservation, how will the town have access to the spoil site, which currently that's the only way you can get to it? I, I also would assume that the berms that, uh, around the spoil site would need to be raised in a hundred years as well, so those are my, uh, two overall comments about getting in the weeds on some of the things that were discussed, and I really look forward to, uh, the next month's meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Donovan. Um, Ms. Montague, I believe you're next.
Hi, thank you very much. My name is Melanie Montague. Um, so I just wanted to thank everyone. This is very, um, interesting, intriguing, uh, deep, and you guys have to do a lot of work, and we appreciate everything that you do. I do have to say though, in, in regard to the short-term rental, is that it's really mind-blowing to me that we're speaking to a board of people, council of people, who two meetings ago didn't even know what a short-term rental was. And then the comments that are being made this evening from them is that their neighbors don't And then the comments that are being made this evening from them is that their neighbors don't know what is going on around them. Yet emails are sent out monthly, newsletters are put out. On the town page, all of these meetings are available. And in town council meetings that we've attended, comments have been made that, wow, we've never seen this many people in a long, long time at our meetings. So it's mind-boggling to me and shocking to me that some of the comments that are being made from the council members, and maybe it's true, they don't know. But it seems to me the resources have been put out there for the community to know what's going on around them. It's their due diligence to seek that information because it is already being sent to their home. And it's disturbing to me that this, these people that we're talking about, the council, will just not take this in seriousness and push this off to not find the answers that they need to find in regard to these questions that they have. Again, nobody knew what a short-term rental was until my husband explained it to the town council. And at that time, there was a lot of questions. So I'm bringing this to you because I feel with as many questions that the town council had, that's equally as many questions as a community may have. And the public forum has not been made equal enough for anybody, us as owners or anyone else, to really make a good decision or an educated decision on is this fair, reasonable? And if it is fair and reasonable, what should be put into play in order to make it so it's a workable, reasonable, communicative agreement that works for all parties? That comes from collaboration. And I don't feel that that has been given. And to, to push this off, I feel is not fair and right. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Montague. I have a Jacqueline, could you say your last name for the record, please?
Hi, yes, I'm Jacqueline Malonson. And I wanted to make a comment about the, I guess it was the master plan. First of all, I wanted to say that I appreciated everything that I see that you guys have worked really hard on so far. One thing that I want to mention as a member of this community here for a very long time that is now seeing eagles here for the first time in many years, the last few years nesting, that I think that no matter what we do as we're going forward, that we think about living in harmony with what we have here of our beautiful wildlife and, and think about building with resilience and sustainability, food forests and things that help with resilience for our entire community and the wildlife at the same time. I know you guys will do a great job with that. But I just really wanted to mention that because as we go into climate change, building our communities so that there are things that we can do that actually feed our community, make us all stronger. And I just felt that it was very important because I hadn't seen anybody mention that yet.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Gialliolo.
Chairman Brown. Chairman Brown?
Yes.
This is Commissioner Broad. You were going to ask all the speakers their name and their addresses.
Right. Okay, Mr. Gialliolo, can you?
Yes, my name is Mark Gialliolo. I live at 3456 Hillgall Drive, just Big Beach, Maryland. I have a couple of comments and I'd just like to finish up with a couple of questions to add that you could possibly get back to me when you, when you go back and look at what was commented on this evening. You know, first of all, the master plan is a vision document. Past planning efforts have articulated and provided a foundation for the current document. And I'd just like to know what changed. And it's the intent is to provide broad goals and objectives. Goals, objectives, actions, strategies in this document should not be applied in isolation. I think that's what you've been trying to do here. They are intended to be considered as an integrated set of principles that aim to balance the decision-making process. The recommendations and actions support numerous interconnected goals, not just one spotted area, as you're alluding to. Town systems, infrastructure, transportation, circulation, land use, historic assets, parks and open spaces, community facilities, economy and housing are inherently complex, never changing. The goals contained in the master plan revision document should be intended to be specific enough to be actionable, but also broad enough in order to maintain flexibility as they, as the issues in the community faces evolve and shift. Couple of questions. How do you plan to prompt, promote a town that is welcoming to residents of all ages, races, ethnicities, abilities and income ranges? How do you intend to build economic resiliency by supporting reinvestment? How, how are you planning to leverage technology to prepare to the 21st century economic development? And what is your plan for fostering greater levels of business recruitment and retention? Currently there are none. And that's all.
Okay, thank you very much. Any discussion from commissioners before we vote on adjournment?
Chairman Brown, I would like to be.
Oh, I didn't see your hand up. Go ahead. Mr. Blitz, right?
Yes, thanks. Eric Blitz, Ninth Lantern Circle Park in Maryland, representing the Rod and Reel. I think the commission really needs to better understand how the properties in the flood areas that you're being shown will be protected. And because I think you're, you're getting a misleading picture and going to lead to bad policy choices. You need to understand how the properties would be protected so that, for example, all, all that area that will, can be protected and most of it will be protected. Already existing bulkheads are there. They can be raised. It has nothing to do with the town's approval, but the state will approve them on an as-needed basis. For example, right now, we can't raise the bulkheads of the Rod and Reel. But eventually, as the mean water line reaches a certain point, they will approve us to raise the water level, the bulkhead, and that will get raised. Some other questions that I think are in your plan that you didn't get to tonight, but I think are worth mentioning, just so you can think about them. You know, how are the limits on the multifamily dwellings and what I would describe as an excessive limit on the height in the center of town at least? How are those consistent with Maryland Smart Growth directives in a town that is defined as a priority funding area? I think you should consider that the reducing of the heights of buildings will lead to greater impervious surfaces on lots. Taller buildings provide less impervious surfaces per citizen. And those are much more environmentally friendly. And so you, I think, I would ask, have you evaluated the impact of the increased impervious surfaces on the environment? And if so, what are those impacts? You know, have you evaluated the impact of reducing the maximum height on the distribution of density of residential growth? Because if you keep a cap low, then properties, there's an incentive to distribute property, dwellings throughout areas. And that's kind of what the entire smart growth was, policy was designed to do, was bring them together in high density to protect other areas that would be preserved. You know, single-family dwellings tend to have much more lawn space per person than multifamily dwellings. You know, with a consequence that, to the environment that, you know, due to upkeep and the use of fertilizers, weed killers, et cetera. And I think you should consider what those impacts will be so you know what you're getting into as you move forward. Parking is much more efficient per person in multifamily than single-family. It is greener, improves walkability in the center of town. But that requires density to make those economically work. Spreading them out will decrease walkability and lead to a higher percentage of people using cars, especially for local trips. Have you evaluated the higher traffic counts that single-family properties impose on road infrastructure? It's typical. If so, what's the analysis? I would point out that, you know, you, you do have in your possession, traffic studies that were done for the Rod and Reel project, for the Mears Avenue, as well as traffic studies provided for these recent projects, all of which show the increased residents would not impose burdens on those properties. But you could use those studies for your broader planning.
Chairman, we're past time, just so you know.
I'll, I'll wrap up there then. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blitz. I would comment, the public has given us a lot of questions that are very thoughtful and I hope commissioners will give them some consideration, certainly. And before I take a vote and hopefully adjourn here, remind commissioners that there were seven questions that I'm not sure we got to any of them to help Chris resolve chapter five. And with your approval at the next meeting, maybe we can take those up in the beginning and move on. But I'll, I'll let you make that decision at the next meeting. I'd ask you to take a look at those and give some serious thought on which way you want to go or whether you want to delete it, change it, whatever. But we need to make some progress. And as far as I can see, we've, we've done a little bit today and conceptually, but we haven't really gotten through chapter five. So with that, we have a motion, we have a second, we've had a discussion.
Can I just ask one question? Did we want to add a meeting or a meeting date? Did we want to? No.
The answer is no, because I need to, do you want to add a meeting date? That's the question.
I, I am very willing to do so because I think we've got a lot of discussion here. So I'm very willing to do it.
Well, I am too. If it were up to me, we'd meet every Wednesday night until we got it done. But that's not possible because of town resources. And I have to coordinate with other folks to make sure that the resources are available to have a meeting. I'll discuss it with the town and see what's available and then get back to you by email. Make a proposal by email and we'll figure out when the next meeting is. Making sure we give appropriate notice to the public so that they can participate. So with that, do I have a motion to adjourn? All in favor?
Aye.
All aye. Hearing none, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for persisting three and a half hours.
Thank you, Larry.
Yeah.
Good night, Neil.
Good night.